Welcome. Oh, I don't have my gavel, but I will, I will gavel. Nonetheless, it is now opening this meeting at 5 o'clock. Welcome everyone who is with us and we are going to start our roll call. Thank you, trustee Nakatani.
President Sontechaj?
I'm present.
Trustee Katz?
Present.
And I'm trustee Nakatani and I'm here. President?
I'm sure our fellow trustees will be joining us.
Yes, so we do have a quorum and we will continue. We will now move to public comment on closed session items as we are, that is next on our agenda, seeing no public comment. We will now proceed to closed session at 5:01. Gavel has now been put down. Thank you.
...
All right, welcome. I am now going to open this meeting, a regular board meeting this evening at 6:10 PM. Welcome and thank you for being here. Very exciting as we enter the holiday season. Let's first do roll call. Trustee Nakatani, take it away.
President Sernsichaj.
I'm present.
Trustee Yu.
Yeah.
Trust, trustee Katz.
Present.
And I'm trustee Nakatani. I'm here. Trustee Abdoli, the screen's not on.
I am here, but I don't think my video, it doesn't allow me to put video on, so I'll just be the voice from, from here.
Okay, I can barely hear, I could hear Ellie, but not too loudly, you know, clearly, so.
Right, is there a way that she can be turned up?
I can also try to talk really loud if that helps.
That was better.
That was better.
Okay, perfect. I will, I will, I'm not shouting at you, I'll just be talking loud.
Thank you so much, trustee Abdoli. All right, and now we are going to report out from closed session. Pursuant to California Government Code, Section 54957.1, the Board has approved settlement by a unanimous vote, five to zero, in the case of student and the Mill Valley School District. The terms include $23,900 in reimbursement for educational expenses. And now I am going to call for an approval of the gen, of the agenda. The Board does reserve the right to change the order of the agenda. Do I have an approval? Do I have a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, I assume that's five zero.
That's five zero.
We need, sorry, we need to do a roll call vote. Yes, I'm sorry. So trustee Nakatani, can you take?
Oh, sorry. President Sernsichaj.
Aye.
Trustee Yu.
Aye.
Trustee Katz.
Aye.
Trustee Abdoli.
Aye.
And I'm trustee Nakatani, I'm an aye.
All right, and now we're going to move to government, excuse me, governance norms and inspiration, and trustee Yu will present this item. Trustee Yu, thank you.
Okay, um, sorry. You got the poem.
All right, and make sure that that poem can be heard by all. We'll get your, mic close, there we go.
No man is an island entire of itself. Every man is a piece of the continent, a part of the main. If a cloud be washed away by the sea, Europe is the less, as well as if a promontory war, as well as if a manner of thy friends or thine own were. Any man's death diminishes me because I'm involved in mankind, and therefore never sent to know for whom the bell tolls, it tolls for thee. Written by John Donne. I, you know, there's so many things going on in the world right now, Israel, Gaza, Ukraine, to name a few, all the shootings. And I think one thing we have to understand is we are all the same, mankind, we should all care. Our neighbor's pain is our pain, and it's easy, you know, we're, we live in this bubble in Mill Valley. It's so easy for us to think like, we, we, you know, we, we live in the safe community, but we should be grateful that we live in this bubble. But at the same time, get ourselves involved and care and, 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 and try to help as much as we can. And also, I think it reminds me of service, why I'm, you know, being a board member. I think we're all doing it, not just for our children, but our community, and, and we're all together as teachers, as parents, and as superintendent, as controller, you know, we're all in it together. And, and let's not forget that we are being a good member of this community, and we, we need to think beyond just us. That's it.
Thank you, trustee Yu, that was very inspiring, appreciate it. And now I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Kaufman, who is going to do a prelude to the next event, prelude.
A prelude to board reorganization. I won't have a poem. But I, I'll use Ellie's item as an example.
Oh, we have show and tell.
There are, there are green bags on your tables. No, you don't need here.
Oh.
And one of the items in the bag came from our CSBA conference where Sean Ginright was addressing, really not just trustees, but the world. He does a lot of work on healing, social justice and healing, and he is suggesting four pivots that we all should consider as we want to heal ourselves and our community. And those pivots are, rather than looking out through the lens, we used to use the term, oh, well, I'll look at the lens of curriculum improvement, or look at the lens of social justice. And rather than looking through the lens, or even wider, the aperture is a new world word that people are using, he's saying, look in the mirror. You know, like, you can't, you can't improve things in the world unless you can look at yourself and have an earnest understanding of where you are and where you stand at any given point in time. He also addressed transaction to transformation, and I think one of the things that school boards struggle with, and not, not ours, but, you know, every, every school board is, we have this role where, you know, you have an agenda to get through, and you have things you have to do, and it's pretty binary. You approve it, you don't approve. There's very little time for deliberation or development as a team. And, and so you get transactional, not transformational. And a, the work I see this governance team doing over time, from, from last December to this December, has truly been transformational. You have come along, where you have modeled for our community, what it's like to be a team, you've modeled for a community, what it's like to be vulnerable, you've modeled conflict, you've modeled earnestness, like you've modeled coming through in a way that matters for kids and for our community. So, you know, that was something I wanted to call out, and I'll speak about that in a little bit more momentarily. They also talked, and this is one thing that we discussed at CSBA, was really moving from problem to possibility. And, and a lot of what we, we in the educational vernacular, you know, we've gone from at risk to at promise, you know, we try to look at opportunities for excellence in our students, not opportunities to solve their problems. And yet, our default is a system, and I, I know mine is, is problem solving, problem solving, what can, how can I get us from A to B so that it's more efficient, rather than looking out at what more potential could there be if we looked at possibility? So that's another piece that, that, that they shared. And then finally, and I think this one resonates for pretty much everyone who's parenting, and anyone who's working, and anyone in education, which is moving from hustle to flow. Like, we constantly, like, I have a to-do list that I go through every day, and I try to get it done, and that's how I know I'm done with my day. But really, what, what is it that we're here for and being, being part of that journey? So, again, I share this with our, with you all, because I think it's definitely a good read, and I think you, you are embodying it. I hope our work embodies it more as we grow together as a team. And then, oh no, someone tied this. So if you open your bag, there is a, these are, I, I've referred, I've referred to you all as the Fab Five.
Oh, I love it.
Over the last year, and I think you have very much come into your Fab Five-ness. However, one of the, so it says on the front, you can all show your Fab Five, and then on the back, it's got your names and the year 23.
My son is going to like.
One of the Fab Ones, however, was that I ordered these online, and I think I took transparency to a whole new level. So underneath this, you have your T-shirt. That will be just a little less transparent. But anyway, I thank you all for your service, and as, as we change into a new board roles tonight, I wanted to, uh, thank, thank Dr. MCH on Team 23 for navigating this system, and also recognizing that every time you change these, you change teams. So, um, thank you all. And now, I'm wondering if.
Thank you.
You are very welcome. Wear your T-shirt carefully.
Now I get to, now I get to do something super, super fun. I, um, this is the time when we start our organizational meeting, and the first agenda item is the election of president. And we have come to an understanding that we are passing the baton, and I myself, we are all free to individually nominate someone. But if you would do me the honor of being able to nominate one individual who I think has been in a set, well, has definitely been an essential part of, of my team with Dr. Kaufman. Trustee Nakatani has been here from the beginning.
Yes.
We've had many, many meetings, lots of shared learning growth, and has a, a very strong grasp of what it takes to run an effective meeting and keep us all together and continue to grow and become, you know, the super Fab Five that we, I think that we have the potential to be in 2024. So, it would be my great pleasure and honor to nominate trustee Nakatani for president of the Mill Valley School Board.
I would love to second that from here.
Oh, see, you guys are so competitive.
But I, I do want to say really quick, um, I, Michelle, you know, the Fab Five, it's been a long road to get here, and it really is a fantastic team, and I really thank you for taking the reins this year, and it's really been a great year, and it's a year where I am proudly, when I, I'm getting back on Wednesday, I'm going to grab that T-shirt. Um, and really excited to wear it because it has been a great year, and echo your sentiments about Sharon, and I think it's, uh, she will make a great president. So, if I got in the second, that's awesome. If not, I will gladly give it to somebody else as well, but.
Thank you so much, Ellie. You and I started this journey together, and you know, as all journeys that have meaning, they have their ups and their downs, their clear, their clearness and their muddiness. So it has been a joy to be where we are today. And yes, again, very excited to nominate trustee Nakatani for president, and it sounds like we need an official roll call vote. All right, so. I guess you probably do.
President Sernsichaj.
Aye.
Trustee Yu.
Aye.
Trustee Katz.
Aye.
Trustee Abdoli.
Aye.
And trustee Nakatani, I will, I myself.
All right, well, since it is unanimous, a round of applause. Yoohoo. Fantastic. And now part of the process is I get to hand you the gavel.
Do we go through the, do I go through the next?
Yes, you are now, you are now immediately president and.
Yeah, now I see.
Yes.
You'll take my glass. We will move straight into the election of vice president slash clerk, which is the role I held until 20 seconds ago. And just like Michelle, I think we, we have someone in mind.
Yeah, yeah.
And who would make a great, who is fantastic at corresponding, actually.
Yeah.
Fantastic, very eloquent, very articulate, and very good at correspondence. So, I would like to nominate now the cats for vice president.
I second.
I would like to say that I am in full support, as I have worked closely with trustee Katz, and she is a very smart, caring, dedicated thought partner who provides a perspective with young children that I felt very privileged to be able to bounce off in times that, you know, we, we were in some gooey situations, and, and she is the ultimate steady and calm and, and yet very vulnerable and empathetic person. So.
Fully, fully agree from here. I mean, truly, uh, just wonderful and, and fully support this.
Very level-headed, sees both sides.
Do, do I still do the roll call vote?
Yep.
Okay.
The roll call, but no.
For one more minute, okay. President Sernsichaj.
Aye.
Uh, trustee Yu.
Aye.
Trustee Katz.
Aye.
Trustee Abdoli.
Aye.
And I'm trustee Nakatani, I'm an aye. You can do the next.
All right.
Okay, so now we are moving to the election of a trustee rep for Marin County School Board Association now.
Isn't president supposed to be that one?
No, actually, anyone can be the representative.
Anyone can be the representative and.
I have been, and I can share with you, it's, it, there, there's minimal responsibility in the end because there's no ongoing meetings. There is an election of people to that you're responsible for, but it's, it, so it's a very, there's lots of opportunity, I think, if someone wants to engage the group. But right now, it's, it, I think it's a law, it's, it's a requirement that we have a member, but the, the actual work is minimal.
So I am open to any of our fellow, my fellow trustees nominating themselves, if they feel that this is a position they would like to fill the next year. And if we don't hear anything, we'll have a discussion, I think.
Aye, aye.
Well, I'll, I'll say that if, if you would like me to serve again, I'm happy to, and then I will bring back engaging information to attempt to encourage someone next year. So this will, will, you know, provide me a reason to, to engage maybe more thoughtfully. So I guess I'll nominate myself.
I second.
Michelle, I'm happy to cover if you ever can't make a meeting, so.
Thank you.
For you, thank you for taking it again.
Thank you.
President Nakatani.
Aye.
I'm trustee Sernsichaj.
Aye.
Uh, trustee Yu.
Aye.
Trustee Abdoli.
Aye.
I am trustee Katz, I'm an aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much. And the next one is the resolution authorization to sign. Oops. Oh, was that the? Oh, um, I don't have anything in front of me. Oh, besides this, sorry. Am I, to read anything? Okay. Okay, sorry. Could I get someone to move to consider approval of Resolution 7-2324?
Second.
This is roll call.
All right, President Nakatani.
Aye.
Trustee Sernsichaj.
Aye.
Trustee Yu.
Aye.
Trustee Abdoli.
Aye.
And I'm trustee Katz, and I'm an aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. And next we have a appointment of board leaders on assignments. This is not a voting item. Trustees will be appointed by the president. Discussion is permitted. I don't have a list, I can look it up, of all the assignments. I believe, does, is everyone comfortable keeping their schools and, thank you, schools and PTAs?
I, I think the continuity is beneficial.
Yes, it is good. Okay, so I guess in this process, I will be appointing you on this. So Edna McGuire will remain Natalie, Miss, trustee Katz. Mill Valley Middle will remain me. Old Mill will also remain trustee Katz. Park will remain trustee Sernsichaj. Strawberry will remain trustee Abdoli. And Tam Valley will remain trustee Yu. And It Takes a Village, right now, I believe, is both.
It's shared, shared between.
Yes. And you would like to continue?
Yeah, yes, that's works for you.
Okay, and then we are going to go through our other district committees. We have DLEC.
I believe you may have mentioned a B C that, that it may not be necessary.
Sorry, we do not have to have a representative because DLEC should be annually reporting to the board anyway. However, if someone would like to be on DLEC, they're welcome to.
Open to discussion or nominations?
I do have, yeah, I do have a question. So when it's open, does that mean we have two trustees that can attend, and there should be some process by identifying we want to go to these meetings? Can you clarify?
Yes, I think that would be, I think one of the things in any open committees would be if something's coming up.
Yes, I think that would be, I, I think one of the things in any open committees would be if something's coming up and you would let the first two people basically who let Anna and me know would be the people who would go. And then of course we'd have VCs and, and minutes and other things that would update the board.
Okay. Um, I think we can leave that open. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I'm on the Measure G Steering Committee for another month-ish until we maybe expand that out. Um, El Cap Committee.
We, do we have to?
Again, this is, this is one that can stay open unless someone's dying to be on it, um, in which case someone may join.
Um, any discussion about anyone who would really like to be on it right now or should we kind of keep it open?
I would venture to guess that we're all interested because of re-upping the El Cap. And so maybe if we could just figure out as we get closer to the meetings, how to rotate attendance so we all get to be part of this.
Okay, that sounds great.
I would agree. And I have attended them and they are very worthwhile. Uh, so I, I hope that we all get the opportunity to and that we, we look at our schedules and, and, um, assist, yeah, Anna and Sid with making sure that we all get a chance.
Okay, right now, uh, Trustee, you and I are the City of Mill Valley reps. Um, I'm happy to keep that. We've kind of established a relationship with some of our city partners, meeting, you know, quarterly and everything. Okay.
I would like to add, i- if you could just, um, I'm interested in also just knowing more and, you know, or if someone can't make a meeting, you're only meeting once or?
We, we just, we meet for coffee, uh, every couple of months. We just kind of set up and talk about what's going on in the city, what's going on in the school district and kind of just, you know, really just kind of establishing a relationship.
On an as needed, needed basis, yeah.
Uh, yes, but you know, anyone can kind of meet for coffee with our city council script, so.
Right.
Uh, Kito Board right now is me and Ellie.
Yeah.
And we'd like to stay on, I think, if that works for our one.
Okay.
Uh, J-LAC.
Same, me and Ellie.
Okay. You two are still good with that?
Yeah. Although I've missed every one of them recently because of the, uh, the training.
Oh, right, because of Mig. Okay, because it's the second one, I see.
Yeah.
Um, Committee C-FAC, it's you guys and you're, that's good, good with me. And PTA Council is.
Me and Ellie and.
Natalie and Ellie. Natalie, uh, Ellie, is that good with you?
Yes.
And E2 Collaborative, I am on that. I will remain on that. Um, Michelle, you were on it too. I don't know if you want to.
You know, I, I'd like to, um, have the opportunity to join when I, when I can. Uh, yeah, but I want to have a little more flexibility.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We could tag team them instead of both going.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, uh, that concludes this. Um, if you want this, you, I could pass it back in my scribbles. Thank you. And then we have the, um, item D six, which is the board meeting calendar for 2024. I think we've all seen.
Yes.
We've all seen it.
And these are, these are just the regular meetings.
Um, oh, is this the bigger book?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'll just click, see it. Yeah. Um, I know what we, I think, um, we've clarified any sort of potential conflicts we've seen for the next year. Okay.
And how many meetings do we get to miss? Can we, can we miss before we get into? Two, okay.
Regular, regular. Is it two consecutive?
Okay. Okay, yeah, one of them I won't be able to make it, so. And then, and then one is a special board schedule?
That, that will be discussion later at the, at board items.
Okay.
Could I get a motion for the 2024 board meeting calendar?
I move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Oh, we heard roll call.
Roll call, oh, yeah. Uh, all right. President Nakatani.
Aye.
Trustee Sernsich Hodge.
Aye.
Trustee, you.
Aye.
Trustee Abdoli.
Aye.
And I'm Natalie Katz, I'm an I. All right, motion passes. Thank you very much. We are going to move to communications to the board and, um, do we have any comments to the board tonight?
And I think Anna has an interjection first around, um, reporting public comment by the end of closed session. I mean, at the end of the superintendent's report.
Oh, sorry.
Make sure that, so for any, um, public comment, either, uh, online or in person, uh, we ask that those are submitted by the end of the superintendent's report so that we can plan the routine for the rest of the meeting.
So right now, do we have any comments on non-agenda items? No public comment. Thank you. And I, did I hear earlier that Pat is not here?
No CSCA report.
We have, I think that's.
Oh, wait, okay.
Correct. Oh, sorry.
Are you here on behalf of Pat?
Public comment on non-agenda items.
Okay.
Okay, oh, sorry. Did you submit a form? Oh, they're, okay, sorry. Give ourselves a minute. Thank you for noticing that because I was not looking out. I was looking only down, you know. Thank you. Okay, we have, um, Melissa Cohen and Stephanie Miservi and you're welcome to come up. Uh, Melissa, would you like to come up first? In typical public comment, we have three minutes. The clock will be three minutes long. Thank you. You're welcome to approach. You guys can both come up since you're one right after the other or not. It's up to you. Hi.
Um, I'm Melissa Cohen. I wanted to read, Alana Niner, who's the PTA president for Mill Valley, Pat from Tam Valley, asked me to read an excerpt of a piece that I recently wrote about the increasing anti-Semitism, the difficulty in being a Jew in, in the world today. And, um, I sent this all to you guys earlier, so you will have the full copy. And I just wanted to read an excerpt to you to give you a little bit of background, um, on what it's like. It's called A Reckoning. In the past seven weeks, the world as I have known it for forty-six years has morphed into something unrecognizable to me. Something I couldn't have understood before October seventh, but now appears with perfect clarity. This global shift has eclipsed my sense of time, condensing the past three thousand years of human existence into a blip. Not the long arc of progress as I had understood it, but as a repetitive cycle of the most primitive inclinations. Hate and violence and bloodthirst for Jews. I now see the biblical stories of attempts to destroy us, not as ancient stories of triumph over evil, but as a modern story, a current one and oppression one of what's to come. The antisemitism that I thought was dead in the world took little time to surface and then to flourish marvelously, spreading like wildfire, its flames engulfing the world. How quickly it happened. A destructive force as old as time unleashed itself, erasing years of peace and prosperity in an instant. And now here we are in the Dark Ages again. Or is it nineteen thirty-nine, or fourteen seventy-eight, or ancient Egypt? Space and time are closing in, playing the same loop, a nihilistic Groundhog's Day. As a young girl learning about our history, I often thought about the roots of antisemitism. Where did it come from? Why was it constant from biblical times through the Holocaust? My young mind struggled to make sense of why everyone hated us. But now I believe the answer is simple. It's pure xenophobia, just hatred of the other. It's hard for my generation of secular Americans to, Jews to understand, but historically we've always been the other. We refuse to pray to multiple gods when the world was pagan and to accept Jesus when Christianity swept the world. We refuse to conform to the religious beliefs of our conquerors and their empires. Our steadfast beliefs make us the enemy. The enemy of fascism, Islamic fundamentalism, every angry mob that has a grievance and every simple mind that can be controlled by a demagogue's propaganda machine. Jews have never tried to convert others and we've been the victims of genocidal campaigns throughout history. So here we are, two percent of the world's population, the teeny tiny other, swallowed by the world's eagerness to believe the tall tales of our evil and greed. And we have seen just how eager the world is to accept as truth any charges our enemies make against us, how easy it is to turn reason on its head. The attacker decried the attackers, the victims of genocide called a genocidal nation, the lone liberal democracy in a sea of authoritarian countries called an apartheid state. Not only do the street mobs proclaim these slanderous absurdities, but so do the mobs who've come down from their Ivy League towers. And so too are freedom-loving institutions quick to pick up the pitchforks or slow to speak the truth. These realities are unimaginable for any country other than the Jewish state. And this new upside-down world where black is white and white is black is now where I reside. I reside in this darker reality where my fellow Jews and I are alone in this world. And for Jews on the left like me, like most of my Bay Area Jewish friends, this rejection has been particularly stinging. The good-hearted people we stood with to support women's rights, LGBTQ rights, the Black Lives Matter movement, D E I, where have they been? We thought we were comrades in a fight against discrimination to make the world a better place, but even they have turned against us. And how is it possible? Didn't they see the images that Hamas proudly broadcasted to the world? The videos of parents trying to lie on top of their children as Hamas came in to murder them in hopes that the bullets wouldn't permeate their bodies so their toddlers could survive? The audio of a Hamas terrorist calling his parents giddy with glee to recount how he murdered ten Jews and weren't they proud of him? How do our allies lack the moral clarity and the humanity to stand up for us in this Hobbesian jungle we are now in?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Stephanie?
Thanks, Melissa. Hard to follow that. My name is Stephanie Miservi and I've been a parent in this district for almost six years. Thank you, Dr. Kaufman, Board of Trustees and District Administrators. Inclusionary work in our district has been a labor of love by many invested individuals. And while I speak tonight only as a district parent, it was in my volunteer position as a former D E I lead for our schools that I felt the greatest pride in our district for the work that has been accomplished and is still happening every day. We have celebrated the richness of our school communities by hosting the first ever Lunar New Year event, a pride celebration, most recently an International Food and Culture Festival, and next month, a highly anticipated Black Excellence Celebration. These events were possible with full support from our district administrators, school board, educators, and the continued mentorship of Tanisha Tate Austin of Critical Friends. And they provided opportunities for new families to be leaders in our district, to collaborate, share their culture and background and, with all of us, and to proudly represent their identities. Therefore, it's not surprising that when there is a surge in acts of hate, bigotry, and violence against any group, those in leadership focused on inclusionary work are often called upon to show support in building awareness and care. This is what many district families are seeking right now, including our Jewish families. Many have expressed deep hurt that the atrocities inflicted upon Jewish people in the massacre of October seventh in Israel have been eclipsed by movements that seem to ignore this terrorist act. Even worse is the existence of a Western push to cast all Israelis and Jews in general as the oppressors themselves in a false binary. Some of this appears to be due to a misunderstanding that being Jewish is just a religion and an understandable reluctance to advocate collectively for just one organized faith. It is definitely multifactorial, but being Jewish is an ethnicity, not just a religion. And it's defined by shared cultural and ancestral roots and also a long history of global oppression. I am also not Jewish. We must hold space for the love, freedom, and security of all people, including those experiencing incredible suffering in Gaza and the Middle East, without blaming an entire state, including the only Jewish state in the world, because that is bigotry. This highlights our moral obligation to teach young people how to be critical thinkers and show discernment in what sources they use for gathering information, especially in this age of strong social media influence. We have a moral obligation to provide opportunities for our students to question false binaries that aim to pit one oppressor against one oppressed group. The truth is that intersectionality, the crossing and mixing of many identities is what defines a community and is the heart of true inclusionary work. Jewish people are a diverse people from many racial backgrounds, but today in many parts of the Western world, standing up for our Jewish communities as they grieve the worst attack since the Holocaust has even been described by some as racist. This has led to a four hundred percent rise in antisemitic acts since October seventh. We have work to do in our community to educate ourselves and our students in recognizing antisemitism when it happens, just as we did with Black Lives Matter, Asian hate, and LGBTQIA+ pride, just to name a few. We have learned that words matter, perpetuating harmful narratives is dangerous, and we must examine the parts of our systems that reinforce these things. And our children are watching. We must get uncomfortable yet again in order to continue growing, creating necessary and positive change and building true inclusive mindsets and practices. Being on the right side of history means you condemn all hate and oppression and throw out false binaries even when they fit a mainstream narrative.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Um, we are going to move on to the next section, which is, okay, so Pat Baron is not here with CSCA. We do not have an update, but Julie and Erin, would you like to come up and update on the MBTA?
Hard to follow that.
Um, so thanks for having us yet again. Um, we know it's a packed agenda tonight, so we'll keep it short. Um, you know, as tonight is the annual organizational meeting, we want to be sure to thank you all for your continued service and dedication to our students and staff in Mill Valley. Um, we just truly appreciate you and we look forward to another year of working with you all. Um, and then Asher, what else do you want to say?
Yeah, uh, we wanted to thank Superintendent Kaufman for the careful and collaborative progress, uh, process that we engaged in to draft the school calendars for the twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Uh, we weighed the feedback from staff and parents in that drafting process and we're so grateful to be engaged in a solutions-focused process, uh, to create these calendars. So thank you. Uh, we're pleased to see these calendar drafts presented to you on the consent agenda tonight and look forward to them being shared with the Mill Valley School District community for the purposes of future planning.
We were looking back on the month of November since we last saw you and we wanted to note that MBTA members were happy to attend the International Food and Culture Festival in November. Um, thank you so much, the D E I committee and the PTAs for putting together such a meaningful event for our students, families, and broader school community. MBTA members are also looking forward to the Black Excellence Event in January and teachers across the district are engaged in the collaboration process to formulate student lessons and units on Black history and culture and preparation for, for our upcoming celebration, which will serve as a kickoff for Black History Month in Mill Valley School District. I'm going to say more. I'm not handing it off to Julie yet. Um, we also just wanted to say, we know tonight you'll be reviewing the CASP data and the I Ready data from twenty twenty-three. And we want to take a moment to recognize all of our teachers and our students for their incredible hard work um, and their continued impressive performance on these assessments.
Also on the agenda tonight is a summary and feedback from the November first P D day, which we also spoke about on, uh, November second. As you know, MBTA members engaged in EdCamp P D sessions where they were able, able to select P D sessions that related to their areas of interest and need. MBTA members reported positive feedback about the format and the P D sessions offered. One session of note was offered due to current events. It was entitled Countering Antisemitism and Islamophobia in Education. MBTA members were appreciative of Superintendent Kaufman and the admin team for arranging the session so quickly in response to world and local events. MBTA members provided positive feedback about the sessions and found both speakers, Dr. Zachary Markwith and Dr. Harry Cornbleat, to be very knowledgeable. Both presenters have been invited back for our January eighth P D day for continued learning, which comes with strong support from MBTA members. In addition, MBTA was pleased to see a wide variety of options for our upcoming P D sessions on January eighth. They include building communities that support all students, strategies to support difficult conversations, interrupting hate speech at schools, Jewish Americans' identity, history, and experience, and more. MBTA members are grateful to partner with the community experts while bolstering our strategies to make Mill Valley Schools a safe place for all of our students. Thank you so much, and we'll see you in 2024.
Thank you. Okay, and next we have Erin Conklin giving us an inclusion update. Thank you.
And just as a preface to this item, we will be rotating now every month something on inclusion or something from DEI. Really, they're synonymous in so many ways, but the Inclusion Committee or the DEI Committee will be bringing this. So Erin, how's the inclusion report for this month?
I do. Thanks for having me. I'm, it's a topic near and dear to my heart, so I'm happy to chat about it, but not for too long. And so there's three things I want to give you an update about, and what I want to say before any of that is that we have in our district an employee by the name of Elise Major, and she's a Special Education Program Specialist, and she really focuses on like helping us build our inclusive practices and on supporting our students with higher needs. She works throughout the district. I invited her for the next update to come and give it with me, so I gave her a couple months to prepare for attending a board meeting. But I do want to say that even when we're working with Sam Drazen, and that's what I'm going to talk about first, that he and Elise really partner together, because the goal, of course, of any of this work is to ensure that we're building the capacity among our own staff to carry it forward so that we don't need consultancy to keep doing that work in the district. Like, one of the things Sam has said to me many times, and this is his second year with us, is that if a district needs me past year three, then I haven't done my job well because I should be working with the district to build the capacity among their own staff. So with that, an update on our work with Sam Drazen. He has been working in a lot of areas. I thought the way to kind of encapsulate it tonight would sort of give a through line of some of the work he's been doing at the middle school. So during one of his site visits at the middle school, he was able to meet with students. And one of the things the students talked about a lot was how they have a hard time organizing their assignments, getting things in on time, how they have a hard time sometimes paying attention in class when teachers talk really fast or present PowerPoints really quickly, things like that. So he got all of this great feedback from students about how are they able to access academics at school, and then was able to use that information to plan a PD that he did with the middle school staff on October 18th, where they talked about how do we build supports for all students so that they are able to access not just content, but how are they able to demonstrate what they're learning and how are they able to well, demonstrate their learning not just with teachers but with their peers? So he was able to work on that with the whole staff, and then the next piece of that was the staff said, you know, we noticed that whether they're diagnosed with ADHD or not, we have a lot of students who have executive functioning challenges, attention deficit, who are maybe diagnosed with attention deficit disorder. So then he was able to take feedback from the staff at the PD and build for the middle school a resource folder that has a ton of supports and strategies in different areas of executive functioning that the teachers can access to support them in the classroom. And then he's coming back on the January 8th PD Day. He'll be doing EdCamp sessions, but he also has some time carved out to kind of follow up with that work on the middle, with the middle school too in that area. He's just starting this next week his site visits at the elementary schools. Additionally, we've had our inclusion community of practice, and that community is co-run by Sam and Elise together. They plan all of those meetings together. All district staff, certified and classified, are invited to attend. It happens after school about once a month. What we've really been focusing on right now is, like, what is authentic inclusion? What do we mean by inclusion? And we've been focusing on the medical versus the social model of disability and having conversations about where we see ourselves along that spectrum in the district. They've been great conversations. The groups have been well-attended, which has been excellent. I should say also, they're after school, and we do compensate the staff for attending. And then the third thing is probably new to everyone, but the Marin SALPA was able to get a grant through the Supporting Inclusive Practices Technical Assistance Program. And we are, they're focusing on early intervention because if we are providing more inclusive spaces for our youngest learners, so in my early learners, they mean kids in early intervention programs, ages three to five, and then up through like TK and kindergarten. So they're focusing, they're working with all of Marin County, and they're through this grant, and we are able to reach out to their experts and have them help us do a program audit and work with our teams and look at kind of, you know, what are we doing well? Where are there gaps? Where can we move forward? And they work throughout the state, so it's great because we have access to these experts who will help us evaluate our programs. That has just started because the grant just started this year, and hopefully we'll have more good news to report about that in a few weeks or a few months.
Thank you so much. Thank you also for including the example of like how things were changing because it really helps to frame, you know, the effectiveness of his work. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then next, Dr. Kaufman.
And kind of following this evening's theme is really a presentation where I am trying to capture for you all some of the work that's being done in this community, and I'll share just a little bit about process and content. So you may or may not remember at the beginning of the year, we started with this, really the concept that we're working on creating a brave space, which will be imperfect, which will be a place where we, in attempting to speak to each other about differences or attempting to find ways forward together, will will create muscles and create misunderstandings and learn from each other. And as a school district in a situation where we are a secular organization and we are trying to educate our children to understand the cultural experiences of our nation, of the children we serve, and in the areas where that is connected to religion, we are trying to be careful, but we are also trying to engage. And so, you know, I appreciate our MBTA reps recognizing that because it is a very, we're being, trying to be careful and we're trying to be very balanced in our work. Next slide. This is our district statement developed, I believe, with Tanisha and the DEI team. You know, it should be front and center in our work when we think about who we are as a district. And as we move into, you know, evaluating our board goals, evaluating our vision and mission in January, and really identifying those goals that we want to operationalize for our community in the LCAP. You know, this work exists and lives in committees, but it is also all of our work. And we don't change children's outcomes without supporting a system-wide approach to making sure all students have access and success in their education. Again, kind of that intersectionality, you know, it's also the intersectionality of cultures, religions, ethnicities is, is an element of becoming a community that supports everybody. But also looking in kind of speaking to, looking in the mirror, you know, this work requires us to bring together our head, our hearts, our body, our mind, our spirit, and, and really knowing when we're coming to the work from a specific perspective, where are we? You know, how do we recognize where we are in this work? How do we analyze and how do we equalize the work that we're doing so that we can remain in community with each other as we learn and grow together? Next slide. This is an example of some work that's being done with Tanisha. It was referred to. We do have the PTSA DEI Committee, and we also have a parent leadership training that's coming up. We had 26 participants on November 6th, and we anticipate a new session on January 22nd or January 24th. And the work is definitely driven by our parents and community, but also at the school level with staff. And this is an example of maybe the more messy of the work we're doing. So we, we had a situation in our community where a parent expressed concerns about the appropriateness of a topic for movie night of a movie selection, and that led to a process where site and district-level conversations were had about really being aware of bias, being aware of our implicit bias, and then, you know, really people coming to speak with heart and, and deep concern from multiple perspectives. And it was an uncomfortable conversation for many, many people who were involved in that. But what resulted was a group of people coming together and really saying like, we, you know, this isn't an example. The example is not the movie. The example is not the, the school site selection. It's, you know, this is a larger issue for our community to know our own biases and really look at what, what sources do we use to vet information that we, we share with our kids? Or how do we, how do we come together and, and really engage each other in something that's appropriate and comfortable for everyone? And this is now resulting in a district-wide parent education engagement date and time to be determined with J.C. Farr. That was who Tanisha recommended that we engage, and it's going to be a district-wide conversation around creating a culture of belonging, and how do you talk to your children about race, inclusion, and belonging? Next slide. These are the two individuals that were referenced when we talked about trying to really create a balanced perspective on us as an educational community, understanding stereotypes, understanding the experiences of children who are facing family and families who are facing antisemitism and islamophobia. Again, no way are we going to be mastering this, but before we can educate children about things, we need to educate ourselves and develop our own vocabulary and language for how we even go about engaging in what could be very, very sensitive and offensive conversations for people where we could actually do more harm than good by trying to engage. And so we're trying to build our, our own community. This is Erin's work that she just referenced, but the inclusion community is a practice. Again, this is a voluntary committee that people are engaging in, but really trying to build that kind of brave space about what does inclusion look like? How do all children have access to our programs in a way that is looking at strengths and assets and their excellence and their possibility rather than the medical deficit model where things are trying to be cured or fixed? Next slide. An amazing event. I mean, I just, there's, I think the link here, there's a link to the video. We don't need to push it, but I just want to call it out that there is a little video, and it, I mean, it was just such a phenomenal, phenomenal event in our community and you know, really set the stage for what we're trying to do next with the Black Excellence. And obviously, you know, we want to move beyond work that celebrates, you know, heroes and holidays in the sense that we really want this to be the experience of children in our classrooms, children and adults in our classrooms and communities. But one of the things that comes through all of these conversations, and I've had conversations with families representing multiple perspectives, is that we have a lot of similarities, more similarities and differences in our experiences and our needs and our hopes for our children. And, you know, I think at the end of the day, this school district has come a very long way. And when you look back to Lunar, Lunar New Year last year, to the types of conversations that people are having one-on-one, two-on-three, sharing, you know, from our community with our community that I think great things are going to happen. It's not an easy journey. It's not a comfortable space to be in for anyone. And as schools, we were trying to be very mindful again that we don't do more harm than good, and there are things we don't know that we don't know. So for us to engage, you know, in trying to educate other people's children until we fully understand things and know how to engage in conversations that don't inadvertently dismiss someone's identity. You know, we have to be very careful. And so I didn't know we were going to have people coming to speak tonight, but I am very happy with the work that we're doing. And again, until the adults know how to have the conversation, it's really hard for us to know how to carefully cultivate the understanding of children. So that's our commitment, and we are on our way. And there we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to make a quick comment. I just wanted to say thank you for all of the efforts because I know there have been many conversations that you've been having with people across the community and being directed to different organizations to pull in to help support that effort. And as I mentioned to you in the email earlier, it is a Herculean effort. And that's on top of everything with Measure G and getting your groundings with, with a new role and just so many things. And so I just have a lot of gratitude in looking at surrounding communities and what I would call missteps, major missteps that they have made in putting forth their own biases and political agendas and putting that front and center with children. I appreciate your holding space for the people who feel the urgency and also pulling back to make sure that as we do it, we do it right. So thank you.
Thank you both. Okay, and at this point, we are going to close the window on submitting for public comment on agenda items. And it looks like we have one comment on an agenda item. Does it say I2? Okay, so it's coming up after Consent Agenda. So we're going to move on to the approval of our Consent Agenda. This is a roll call vote. Oh. Are there any items any trustee would like to remove from Consent Agenda? If not, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Second?
I'll second.
All right. Trustee, trustee, sorry, President Nakatani.
I.
Trustee turned to touch.
I.
Trustee, you.
I.
Trustee, Abdoli.
I with my normal caveats of any clients that appear on my Form 700.
And I'm trustee Katz, and I'm an I.
Thank you. Consent Agenda is approved. And now we will move on to item I, Student Learning and School Programs. We have Kate Sprague will present Spring 2023 State and Local Assessment Data. And this will come on after. No. The second one.
Hello. Thank you, Kate. Okay, so tonight we're looking at measuring Mill Valley student progress through Spring 2023 CASP and iReady data. And before we get into the actual data, we just want to give some context to why we're doing this and what we do when we look at data in schools. So this data presentation for you tonight is really an overview, not an analysis. We use data in a variety of ways and analyze it in classroom settings, in school settings, through work with TOSSAs, with RAMP specialists, through grade-level teams, and it's ongoing work that we do as a district and as sites, for example, at Site Council. The primary purposes of student assessment data are typically to inform instruction and evaluate student learning progress. We use multiple measures to monitor student learning and growth, including a variety of state, district, and classroom-based formative and summative assessments. Formal district-wide benchmark assessments are administered throughout the year. In this district, we use iReady for three times a year and CASP once a year. iReady also provides many options for detailed analysis of student and class proficiency and progress, and we've been excited to continue to offer some iReady professional development this year to be able to continue to support our teachers in looking at that data in different ways. All of the assessments contribute to a more complete picture of each student as a learner, including so many things that happen in the classrooms every day. Onto CASP. The CASP is the California Assessment of Student Progress, Student Performance and Progress, and it includes the following assessments. The Smarter Balanced Assessment, which is a summative assessment given in grades three through eight and grade 11. It's composed of the Computer Adaptive Test, or the CAT, and the Performance Task, the PT. It's based on the Common Core State Standards for English Language Arts and Mathematics. And then the CASP also includes the CAST, the California Science Assessment, which is a summative science assessment given in grades five, eight, and 10. The CASP performance levels are four different levels. Four is standard exceeded, three is standard met, two is standard nearly met, and one is standard not met. CASP replaced STAR in 2014-15. CASP replaced STAR in 2014-15. It was canceled in 2020 due to so many students being on distance learning. In 2021, it was optional for districts to do the CASP. And we here in Mill Valley resumed in 2022, along with much of the state. So 2022 and 2023 CASP testing resumed, but it was at a reduced length for the, for the ELA and math computer adaptive test. And it should be noted that the science test does not have a reduced length. So those are, those are quite heavy tests that kids are taking in fifth and eighth grade. And spoiler alert, our kids are doing awesome on them. We should be very proud of them. Okay, so thinking about our district priorities and LCAP goals, because hopefully all of this data is in service of that. Some of the priorities that Dr. Kaufman has helped us start to outline as a district include guaranteed and viable curriculum, multi-tiered systems of support for all learners, one year's growth in one year's time, using data to inform instruction and measure growth towards standards and coherence, alignment and calibration TK through eight, which serves all of those uh, previous items. These all fit into primarily these goals from our existing LCAP. Goals one and two, several actions under each of those. And these are also um, how we may consider shaping the formation of the next LCAP, which we'll be getting into as we move on through this year. Okay, so some of the things to consider about this data. The goal of the data is to inform instruction and how to support students. Last year was our new baseline, knowing that the assessments were a little adjusted. This is a point in time, CASP is a point in time summative assessment. And iReady provides point in time data along with progress monitoring data to start looking at kids' growth over time. Spring 2023, we did iReady reading for K5. Individual student CASP scores have been provided to families through the Ares Parent Portal. And student iReady data has, from the fall, uh, assessment was provided to families either going home with the student or via the mail. Okay, so getting into the data now. The first thing that we wanted to look at is just the overview of our data. So the first data we're looking at here is the English Language Arts data, and this shows CASP by grade level. The band across the top is the combined standard met and standard exceeded data for each grade level. So third grade, 78% of students met or exceeded, 82% of fourth grade, 85% of fifth grade, 79% of sixth grade, 76% of seventh grade and 80% of eighth grade. And those are last year's grades. So third grade is this year's fourth graders because we only take it in grades three through eight. You can also see that these also have numbers available for the district level numbers. So you can see that that 78% in third grade, for instance, represents 203 students. And at the top, next to the grades, is the number of students who took that assessment. So the 260 students were assessed out of 263 students enrolled in that grade level. We always have a few students who are unable to complete the test for a few different reasons. Um, and so it is very rare that our number of enrolled matches exactly the number of students assessed. If we move on to the next slide, this is the math data. It's set up in the same way. So you can see across that green band for each grade level, the percent of students who met and exceeded. 83% of third graders, 80% of fourth graders, 80% of fifth graders, 68% of sixth graders, 69% of seventh graders and 75% of eighth graders. So this is just that snapshot in time of how our performance was on ELA and math last year. The next slide is the CAST scores forecast, so the science tests for fifth grade and for eighth grade. The fifth grade uh, scored 71% of met or exceeded and eighth grade 69% of met or exceeded. Just for a quick comparison, for example, in Marin, the number for fifth grade who met or exceeded was 48%. And for the state of California was 32% in fifth grade. So our students are doing outstanding in particular on this test. Overall, in all the, in all of the realms and science has similar, we're, we're doing just really outstanding on this very challenging science test. Okay, so next, talking about iReady. This is a snapshot of the spring 2023 iReady data when all K5 students took the reading iReady assessment and about half of K5 students took the math iReady assessment. The levels represented here are based on iReady's five-level placement. And they're the five levels shown in the left column. So mid or above grade level, early on grade level, one grade level below, two grade levels below and three or more grade levels below. iReady has done extensive correlational studies to compare placement on iReady to CASP. Generally speaking, students scoring early on grade level or mid or above grade level in the spring will score standard met and standard exceeded on CASP. And the next slide shows a comparison of the spring iReady scores to the spring CASP scores for three to five, grades three to five students. So if we could go, great, thank you. So in this, the scale scores from iReady. So every student receives on CASP and on iReady, they receive both a level and a corresponding numerical score called a scale score. The scale scores have ranges from iReady's correlational studies that allow us to be a little more specific about which students are predicted to teach, to reach standard met or standard exceeded on the CASP. So here, this calculation is just a little more specific about who from iReady falls into that standard exceeded or standard met for um, iReady reading and iReady math and how that compares to the standard met and standard exceeded for ELA CASP. And this is only data for three through five students, not for the whole district. All right, this is one of my favorite slides. I think the colors just make it a little more interesting to me. So this is the cohort data. So when we think of student cohorts, we're thinking about watching the same students or about the same students because we always have changes every year as they travel through our district over time. So the largest diagonal there in green, if we follow that down, those students were in third grade in 2018 and they graduated from eighth grade with us last year in 2023. So if we follow that diagonal, we can see how their scores changed as a whole over the time they were in the district. The cohort data is the students from one year to the next, the same students, but in different grade levels and years. In the final 2023 column, bold indicates improvement for the cohort. So we can see that, for example, those eighth graders last year improved overall from 77% in ELA to 80% in 2023. Parentheses indicates, indicates a decrease for the cohort. And there can be many reasons for a decrease. It could be that the makeup of the class has changed because we had a lot of students move to a different school setting or we had a lot of new students join. And it can also be because of the content on the assessment from one grade to the next and how it changes. Uh, but still a, a good piece of data to look at. And this is versus cross-sectional data. So if we look across a row on this, we can see, for example, at the top, how third grade does, has done as a district over time. Really incredibly consistent as a third grade over time. And both of those are important considerations as an educational system as we're thinking about um, what we do as a system to support students and how we can consider how we're doing things as a district. The next slide is back to Mill Valley only, and this is just coalescing as a district overall. Our reflection of the district as a whole over time. And you can see there that in the 22-23 column, overall, we improved in all areas from 21-22 to 22-23. That's pretty outstanding if we think about the things that our students are still encountering and certainly a testament to all that's happening in our classrooms every day. This represents um, 1,593 students enrolled in grades three through eight. Uh, so certainly, you know, about two-thirds of our population and a great way to, to think about how our students are doing. The next slide shows our data compared to Marin and to California for ELA, for math and for science. And again, this is combined grades. So this is not individually, but grades three through eight for ELA and math, grades five and grade eight, grade eight for science. The next slide is, are some similar districts and our comparison to these districts. So these districts are all around the Bay Area, Reed and Larkspur-Cortumadera, LCMS. LCMSD is Larkspur-Cortumadera School District, so our neighbors. And then we have Los Gatos in Santa Clara County and Moraga and Lafayette in Contra Costa County. All of these districts are K8 districts, so they are um, similar in that we're just looking at grades three through eight for their data. And they do have similar demographics. There are some differences um, in different areas, but more or less similar districts for our district. And again, we can see that Mill Valley is performing quite strongly. And the next two slides we're going to look at are some of our subgroup data. So the first slide here is looking at race and ethnicity. I know the writing is small on this, but there's one box for ELA and one box for math. Then that population is divided into the different subgroups that the state of California um, subgroups are students into, so white, two or more races, Hispanic or Latino, Asian. And then we use a combined grouping for um, American Indian, Alaska Native, Black and African American, Native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander and Filipino. And we do that because the subgroups are smaller than four students. And so in order to preserve the anonymity of those students, we feel it best to combine those as we're representing them here. We, of course, distill them when we are looking at it from a school or a classroom, classroom level or something like that. So the first column in white after the subgroup label is the percent of the total students tested. So that's how that population is represented in our, in our whole population as a school district. Then the yellow column is the percent of that subgroup that had not met or nearly met uh, for their scores. The third column, the next column in green, the first green column is the percent of the subgroup that met or exceeded. And the final column is the difference between the district average and that subgroup for met and exceeded. In the column for present of subgroup, per, percent of subgroup met and exceeded, that column is bold to represent an increase from the previous year's levels for that subgroup. So incredibly, all of our subgroups performed better this year than last year. Which, I mean, our scores went up, so that also makes sense, but it's still important to note that even individually as subgroups, all of our scores went up in this, in our race and ethnicity subgroups. Looking at the difference between the district aver, average and the subgroup met and exceeded, this column shows an increase if the percentage is above the district average for that um, area for ELA or for math and parentheses, which show, indicate a decrease for that subgroup from our from our district averages for those. The next slide is dealing with um, the subgroups for English language acquisition status. And before we talk about the data on this, I want to give a little bit of information about the English, what English language acquisition status means. So when parents and guardians enroll children in school in California, they provide the home language of that student. Based on that reporting, students with home languages other than English are assessed in listening, speaking, reading and or writing on something called the LPAC to determine their English proficiency and any need for English learner services. English learners are students who are determined to need direct and continuous support to develop their English language skills to succeed in the school's regular instructional programs. Students at the initial fluent English proficient level have more developed English language skills, but may need occasional support. Reclassified fluent English proficient students are those students whose English language acquisition status changed from English learner to RFEP or reclassified fluent English proficient during that reported school year. And students who report English as their home language are classified as English only and they are not assessed. So now, if we look at the data, we have these four subgroups. English only, reclassified fluent English proficient, initial fluent English proficient and English learners. And this chart is set up the same way as the charts on the previous slide. So the next column over shows the percentage of our population that is represented by each of those subgroups. Then the yellow and the green next are the percent nearly met or not met and the percent met and exceeded. And again, in bold, if that subgroup made a, an improvement from that subgroup the year before. And then finally, the difference between the district average and that subgroup's met and exceeded. And I just would note that in particular, English language is um, a subgroup that doesn't, that has a lot of change year to year. So whereas race and ethnicity, the students are unlikely to change their race and ethnicity reporting from year to year. English language status does change for students. Students can be reclassified. We get new students in and that might drastically change our numbers from one way, drastic is perhaps a stronger word, but it could change our numbers, especially when we're dealing with percentages in the 3% or 5% or 4% range. Okay, so now that we've looked at a lot of data, we just wanted to provide some high-level data points. And of course, we want to recognize that overall Mill Valley achievement has improved between 2022 and 2023, which is absolutely something to be celebrated. We also want to showcase that our ELA achievement in particular showed improvement. And we think it's important to acknowledge that TLL is an, our targeted learning lab led by our TOSSAs and our RAMP specialists and in collaboration with our classroom teachers, is an important aspect of targeted support for our K5 students. And MBMS has done a lot of work as well to address student needs and ensuring that they are identifying students who can benefit from additional support. They actually added an additional advanced English learner support class this year as well. And their reading classes are working very hard to be extremely data-based and individually appropriate for students. Several cohorts also improved between 2022 and 2023, uh, and we saw subgroups as well. And finally, that we believe iReady continues to be an important assessment tool for providing specific progress monitoring and achievement data beyond what we can get from CASP related to student progress. And we know that supporting our staff and using that data and providing the time and the training around that is essential for that to be successful. So from here, next steps. We have five things that we think are the next steps, uh, and we'll tie that in at the very end. So one thing is continuing to develop that system-wide coherence. Thinking back to the priorities on the first slide, what do we want all students to know and be able to do? And how do we know if they know it? What do we do if they don't know? And what do we do if they already know? So how are we linking those things together? We also want to consider thinking about the implementation of common evidence-based curriculum TK8. We're moving forward with that ELA adoption in TK through five. And we know that the collaboration with our teachers is essential in that. Moving towards something similar in math and science TK5 as the next years unfold. And then looking at the middle school curriculum as well. Currently, they, the math team is aligned using CPM and the science team through Amplify Science and the social studies team through TCI History Alive. We also know that it's important to continue using common assessments for screening, benchmarking, progress monitoring, differentiation and inclusive instructional practices. So essential to that is identifying and implementing a data management system that we can have all of our users and stakeholders in and understanding what the data means, the different data that we're capturing and how that provides us the fullest pictures of our students. We also need to increase the use of available tools for assessment and intervention and acceleration, including through meaningful professional development. So continuing to work with our teams in order to provide that in ways that is beneficial for everybody. And finally, continued development of the tar, of targeted learning supports for students. That's our approach through targeted learning labs and thinking about our multi-tiered systems of support. And then aligning professional development supports and collaboration time and focus on the implementation of systems in service of all of those above goals, as well as the use of data to improve student outcomes. And coming up in service of those things, the February mid-year LCAP Local Control Accountability Plan update with the district me, metrics will be tied to this and development of the new LCAP with priorities and goals moving forward from next year.
Thank you. That was, that was comprehensive. Do we have any questions from trustees? Trustee you.
Great results. I, I was just noticing one thing, that middle school percentage of kids in the middle school who met or exceeded were lower than the elementary. Is that typical developmental stuff or?
I think a lot of it can be, especially if we think about the students of the last few years and moving from the elementary school with disrupted elementary school years to the middle school. But also, you know, it is very different to attend a class for only 55 minutes a day. I think it's 53, not 55, but attend a class for 53 minutes a day than it is to be able to return to that topic throughout the day or interweave those topics through um, an elementary homeroom classroom. So um, you know, and students start to feel differently about school and elementary school or in middle school. So, you know, a lot of times, not all, but some. And so there's just a lot of factors that work there. And of course, students are going through drastic change developmentally themselves as well.
Okay. And if you look at the cohort data sheet though, you'll see that historically it's grayed out, but it, it's not new. That lower percentage than the K5.
Yeah, okay.
It's been.
That's why, that's why I wasn't.
It's a trend.
Yeah.
Developmental. On, on a related note, I don't know if we'll get to this later, but I know there's been discussion. On, on a related note, I don't know if we'll get to this later, but I know there's been discussion in the last PD day about vertical articulation and being able to bring elementary and middle schools together. So can you give a like two, like two second snapshot of that? Like, because it seems like that is an area that, you know, it's great that we are, that we are doing it. Hopefully the work is continuing and I'm just grateful to everybody who's been part of that discussion.
Yes, there was articulation work at the November PD day. And there is also time set aside for articulation work at the January PD day. And there have certainly been discussions about how we can best support that transition of our students. And also thinking about the ways that as our grade level teams, we can work together and support teachers and working together to align or determine how they're checking on. They've been, our math committee has led work around common formative assessments in math. That is a way for students to, or teachers to score other students' work from outside their classes. And then discuss things like, what does it mean for a student to show proficiency on this assessment? Oh, well, you think, you know, that's one, that's great. I hadn't thought about it that way. Or, oh, wow, how are you teaching that? That's a gap that my students always seem to show. And so their teachers have really invested a lot of work at the elementary levels in that. And I know they're continuing to look at ways to continue that work.
Thank you. I'm grateful to our district team and math committee and all the teachers involved in those conversations. Cause I'm sure that is also no small feat.
And trustees are in charge.
So you know, the conversation around data is, is never ending. And you know, we've had this disruption in the data. So, you know, I think it'll be interesting to see year three and year four. I'm wondering if there's any district conversation around really, you know, looking at kids grade level wise and these tests. And has there been any conversation on just how to unpack those little pieces that you can, you know, start to say, it's, you know, it's this unit or my, it's, you know, it's, it's probably these sets of questions because everybody in the district of fifth grade is getting this problem wrong. Can you speak a little bit in terms of, you know, the scale of one to five? Are we at one or we at three or we at five? Or is this something that is even a part of the conversation?
Well, I think that to some extent, what I mentioned about the common formative assessments in math is one way on the path to that. We in, I am lucky enough to have participated in the Marin Teaching Network and ETF. And when that was a thing, you know, when I first started in the district and the common formative assessment conversation kind of brings us back to that where it is so important that we rely on each other's as professionals and rely on classroom teachers expertise of their knowledge and of their students and of the age of their students to think about those things and really be able to have those conversations and look at data through that lens so that we're not just looking at it through, you know, a high view, but instead thinking about what that means in the classroom. I think that also that is one of the things that, for example, I'm really excited about getting teachers more into. As we learn more about iReady, we're realizing that there is a lot of data in that. And we, I mean, I think we can take responsibility for not rolling iReady out in the most beneficial way for our students and our teachers. And we need to be sure that we address that now so that we can have a really beneficial experience with it moving forward because the data in it is incredibly rich. And it will drill down all the way to something like a standard so that you can see for a specific standard or multiple standards in your class, how a stu- how your list of students in your class or in your grade are performing. And so we can do that at the district level also. And I think that those are the kinds of things that we want to start figuring out where those conversations have a place in our district. So I, I mean, I think people who had me as a teacher might say I was a hard grader. So I might be inclined to put us more at a two than higher. But I, I think that we also have done a lot of good work over the last few years. And it's important that we acknowledge that and also look to how we can continue moving forward, really in service of student learning.
Well, and when I'm listening to you, I can hear that you've had the experience, you understand what I'm saying, that it is. And it's back to this conversation of the, the, the big, you know, big agenda items of, of tiers, you know, multiple tiered systems of support and alignment of, of assessments. And these things do take, they, you know, you can't snap your fingers.
Yes.
But if we have good leadership in that area and ongoing professional development for everybody, I'm looking forward to when you actually have, you know, your teachers and the kids coming and telling us about what this data means to them, because then we know that we've internalized the work, right? But, and I'm looking forward, if you know of any districts that are actually doing that, would love to join, you know, join the train to see that in action. Because I know it's an ongoing conversation that's national. We're always looking, we're always looking to figure out how to, to close that gap. You know, I noticed that the gap's not 20 anymore. It's 17 and 16%. So I want to say kudos there because 20% is, you know, typical. So I'm looking forward to having other conversations around how you're doing that or what you're noticing or not noticing. Cause that, that's, that's a, a celebration in my mind from ears of looking at, at data. So thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Abdallah, do you have any questions?
I don't. This was super helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I just have one, one, thank you for showing data from years past. Actually, even though I know that the test changed and you said it got shorter. So I realize it's not a complete apples to apples, but it's really nice to be able to see. It's like, especially since this is one of my kids that went that long as diagonal, you know, I'm like, oh, it's just, it's really helpful, I think, to get a, you know, a sense of really how the grades have moved. But I'm just curious. I noticed that not a lot of our sixth and seventh graders take the CASP compared to, it seemed to be a high percentage that opt not to take it. Maybe that's just typical countywide, maybe that's typical statewide. I'm just wondering if you have any data on that.
Oh, you mean like, for example, in math, that 228 of 237 students in sixth grade took the CASP?
Yeah. Is that, yeah. Two, oh, oh, that's not it. Okay. Sorry. I was looking at something. Nevermind. I, I was reading the numbers wrong then.
Oh, okay.
Oh, it's actually a high percentage that everyone.
Yeah, we are required by the state. I'm, I'm blanking right now, but I think it's 95% we are required. So parents, we, we do have a variety of reasons, including that some parents choose to opt their students out of the testing. But we are required by the state to have 95% of any student population.
I was reading it wrong. So it's the, it was the iReady that like half the students take iReady in math. Is there a reason?
There were discussions at the middle school last year about the impact of multiple testing schedules on our students in order to accommodate CASP testing and iReady testing. And the decision was made to only do iReady twice last year at the middle school rather than also in the spring.
Okay. Um, that's it. Anything, anything else?
Just one of the, I mean, I think, thank you, first of all, it's great presentation. And you know, what, what we're presenting in terms of a need for data and the ability to drill down and use the data, you know, really speaks to us as a governance team prioritizing what we want done. Because in order to have collaboration around vertical alignment and, you know, really being able to backwards map from the CASP test or from a content area curriculum, you know, folks need time to do that work to learn a data management tool like iReady so that it can be connected to their instruction. And then really, you know, our time on Wednesdays together needs to be really focused on those data cycles of inquiry and what we can do to impact instruction in real time. And of course, bringing people together, you know, district wide is preferred because it's really hard to collaborate if you're in a grade level with one other person. Or I mean, you know, or, or you're the only one in a grade level. So that's another reason why we're also trying to keep at least two teachers at every grade level. So just, you know, as we look forward to what are we going to ask everyone to do in the system? I think making sure that we prioritize time for data cycles of inquiry so that we can do things like go back and look at those seven students who are not making it. I mean, we have so few children who aren't already meeting standards that even a focal student approach would be beneficial and very effective. But we need the time to sit down and look at who those learners are, what their needs are, and then to plan.
And I, I would just add in the articulation discussion, we have both horizontal and vertical articulation. And horizontal articulation would be within a grade level. That could be at just the site or at the district. So there's time related to that. And then for vertical articulation, you need twice as much time because you need third grade to meet with fourth grade. You also need third grade to meet with second grade. So there, there really is, you know, in order to have this done in a, in a really impactful way, we have to be sure that we are allocating the time in order to do that.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
The next item is me. And I'm including, I will continue to include things like this without presenting it as an information item, without going a lot of review for you.
But that's.
Yes. Yeah. And, and really I'm just doing this because I believe it's important to be transparent. I, you know, we have agendas that are packed. I don't want to spend a lot of time in professional development because we're kind of doing the autopsy in professional development. And situationally, things change because next year with a full adoption, we may not be able to do a menu based model. So, but I do want you to know what our staff feedback is and just keep you in the loop. So that is all I have to say on this. And I do believe we have public comment.
We do. Thank you so much. I'm, I think we all reviewed the slides ourselves.
Can I, can I have a question?
Um, yeah. Do we do, do we do public comment first or trustee? Thank you. Public, thank you. Thank you. Lisa Katz, is it Katz? Okay. Thank you. Please come up. You have three minutes. This is actually very.
Hi, I'm Lisa Katz. I have three kids, including one middle schooler at Mill Valley Middle in eighth grade and one who's going to be entering kindergarten in the Mill Valley School District next year. So kind of echoing some of the sentiments that we've already heard tonight, I just wanted to say that I too have felt very frightened by all of the antisemitism happening, not only globally, but also here in Marin County. I'm sure you've heard about one of our local middle schools, et cetera. Thank you so much to all of you for your time and effort, especially you, Dr. Kaufman, for everything you're doing to help spread the awareness around antisemitism and Islamophobia. It is really, really appreciated. And the only other thing I want to add is that I think we just need to keep, keep going. And unfortunately, this is not going to be a quick fix at all. Just like all the other races and ethnic groups that have endured hatred. It's the same thing. It, it's something that we're going to need to keep, keep doing and keep going. So thank you so much for the start.
Thank you. Now we will go to questions for Elizabeth Bathus. Trustee you.
Just, I, I just, I just, I just saw about 70, 80 teachers responded to the survey. Is that a good percentage? Because we have almost 300 teachers, I thought.
I think last time we only had 21 people respond. So, so it's, it's a 300% improvement. But yes, I mean, the progress, we're doing our best and our best is getting better. I think, you know, I think, you know, again, you all know my feelings about surveys. You know, the people who want to respond, respond. Other people don't. I think, you know, in this case, the, the increase in response is super helpful in that it, it tells us we're trending in the right direction. Again, caveat emptor, when we go into the adoption, it'll be focused on the adoption. It might be killing some of the joy. So hate to say that, but you know, that's it is what it is. Any other questions?
Any other questions? No. Yeah. So, yeah, do the survey. Thank you, Dr. Kaufman. Give them time to do, yeah, right, right. The last, that's right. The last 10 minutes or something, right? Thank you. Okay. The next item, oh, yay, facilities. Measure G update Julio and team. Thank you very much.
Hello. Thank you.
Good evening. Julio Royal here for our Measure G update. So I'm director of facilities of maintenance, operations and safety. And we're here tonight with our ACOM team, Brett Mitchell and Sandrine Hitchcock. Brett is our principal in charge and Sandrine is our program manager, as well as our Leonakis team, who are our middle school architects and Laura Nas here, principal in charge, as well as Mark Jewell, who's also on the architect team. And then into action, we have Abraham Villan, he's our pro- project manager. So we'll get started here with our Measure G update. So the purpose for tonight is we're going to provide an updated where we're at with Measure G. Thank you for approving our Fireflows test services for Tam Valley Elementary. That's some additional services that will help us there with the JKAE. So that's going to be moving forward. Here, our request for approval that's going to be coming next month is for December for California Environment Quality Act consultant for the Mill Valley School District. So that'll be coming, I'm sorry, we're in December. That's going to be coming next month in January in the, the top of the new year. And then we're going to give today an update on our interim housing options and our status of the exploration of that, that topic as well as review next steps. And so we look forward to hearing board questions for tonight as we're bringing forward information as well as review our current and upcoming timelines, including our critical path decisions coming up. And so this is our Measure G master schedule. And so the purpose of for us to continually bring it every month is to just show the board where we're at in progress in the, in the master schedule as well as give us an opportunity if there are any changes. We don't have any to report in this month, but that's really what our goal is to bring this as a, as an item every month to be able to update the board and show the progress that's happening and then to be able to show any changes. I'm going to pass it over to Sandrine Hitchcock with ACOM, who's going to go over the Measure G scheduling, the, the other sites.
Good evening. As far as the middle school schedule, again, no changes from last month. And it is our intent to show you the, the schedule every month. So we can provide any update if any, but we are on track at this time, working with the architects team on the, on the concept design. It is still our intent to bring to the board in February, an option for review along with cost estimating and schedule. So generally tracking for the middle school. Next slide, please. So just wanted to give you an overall update on everybody we got on board so far on all projects and what, where we are. As far as the architects, engineering teams, as mentioned, we're working with Leonakis on the concept design right now. As far as Tam Valley and Strawberry, we are working with JKAE on updating or sorry, on validating the project priority one list. So essentially we did site visits, working with the contractor. Also, we are going to do a site validation and review of all those items and move forward with the scope. As far as Lees Lees back, we are working with Flint on the middle school cost estimates that we'll bring to you early next year. And GCCI, same thing, validating the scope and starting the cost estimating to validate the facility master plan. We'll, we'll have Abraham provide an update on the last community outreach meeting. Our next one is scheduled December 18th. Environmental services, I will give you an update a little later. A few slides down on what has happened and what is coming up. Sequo that we'll bring to you next month. And other items, surveying almost complete with Strawberry, Tam and middle school. And we'll wait until next year to start with the other two. Modernizations has met, we are waiting. It is pending schematic design documents so they can actually scope that report. Geotechnical services that will be happening once we have an approved concept design. So hopefully in February of next year. State funding, we have submitted some applications already to the state. CD has actually reviewed a few and provided some comments. So this is moving forward quite nicely. And finally, we are about to wrap up the project management information system and dashboard system, which will essentially help us communicate progress of Measure G publicly on the district website, and that should happen somewhere in January going live. A lot of things happening. Thank you. So we wanted to give you an. Thank you. So we wanted to give you uh, an update on the interim housing. Um, so we've heard a lot of questions about, have you looked at another site? Have you looked at another option? And we kind of wanted to go through that list and what's happened. Um, starting with the city of Mill Valley, we had a meeting um, on December fourteenth with the city.
What's in the future?
Sorry, November fourteenth typo.
Sorry.
Thank you. Um, so we had a meeting with the city on November fourteenth. Um, essentially to talk about two things, parking um, during the interim housing and construction. But also uh, potentially using uh, city or um or other land to, for the interim housing. The short version is coming out of this meeting, there wasn't much opportunity to partner with the city. Um, so we will, um, they recommended talking to the church, which we did. When was it? It was on the fifth uh, of December. And um, the church indicated that they have some parking, that they would be willing to um to give or lease to the school district, so we will be continuing discussions with them. Next slide. Um, there were questions about the seminary, uh, and essentially because of the field act. Um, we cannot really consider that facility for interim housing. Um, and Laura, if you want to maybe briefly talk about that, um, that'd be great.
Sure, um, the field act was put in place post earthquake and all schools in California were evaluated against the field act. And either required to be brought up to um, current earthquake standards or were taken out of commission. And that was a time when a lot of the historic schools you see in California uh, either became adult schools or some other use uh, for them, or they were renovated. And so the field act governs that. And uh, the seminary is a private institution, has not gone through field act review.
Um, also not to mention the timeline that it would have to go through that approval process and transportation impact. Uh, and now that was discussed in October and um, the, the board eliminated and as an option. Um, so essentially we're left with the middle, the existing site uh, at this point, uh, which is an existing uh, school property meeting the field act. Uh, that can accommodate the interim housing and would have the shortest timeline. So any questions so far?
What about staging? I mean, where, where is a staging site?
So we, we actually have our Flint team here, but what we've been talking about um, so far is essentially onsite or very close to the site.
I just have a quick question. I, I know, meeting was with city of Mill Valley, there's been mention of because our school district crosses city of Mill Valley and Marin County. Has there also, I, I don't even know if there is any available option within county territory, but have there been any conversations um, from a county perspective?
We had some initial conversations with the department that come in and inspect our methane meters. And so we added inspections with them, um, sorry, a conversation with them at that point. Um, we haven't, there haven't been any county properties that I've, I've been identified to kind of follow up on some further um conversations, but no, we've talked to the city as well as the church and had those exploratory conversations initially with the county as well.
Okay, so covering all your bases.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, trustee, someone to charge?
Can you share just some general um, logic the city presented about the financial impact of building interim housing? Or hardscape on the field? Did they come with figures? Can you just kind of share what you noticed and what your thoughts were?
Yeah, some of the takeaways from the meeting from the city was initially one of the first pieces is their parking. And so they feel like it's a very impacted parking space as it is. And so they wanted us to explore the church because they feel like with the current programs that they currently have. Um, by the time it's midday, it's really impacted and it would be difficult for let's say fifteen or twenty spaces to be allocated for medical staff, middle school staff. That was their perspective and it, it wasn't a hard no, but it was, it was um, it was communicated that we really wanted to look at it as a absolute last option, given what they saw as a big hardship for that parking lot to be able to allocate spaces during the interim design. As well as when we discuss with them, using half of the field for hardscape um, to be able to help supplement basketball court since we would be building on our own hardscape here and um, onsite. They um, they said that because of the, they gave, they did give us a figure of a financial impact of what it could be for the, the renting that they have as well as things like the, the festival that they have annually. And it would disrupt those kind of, those kind of services and rental agreements that they already have in place. And so they did feel like that was a, a lot for them to be able to kind of interrupt and to stop for a shorter time period. We had communicated with them that it was something that we would use in the interim during that time period and then bring it back to exactly how it was. And that's how we came to the conversation proposing that as a solution. And so that didn't really, we didn't, there wasn't a lot of um additional con- conversation to explore that further from their point of view. They felt like it was pretty difficult. They had their parks and wrecks in their um, department who's over the community who shared those hardships with, that they felt like it would be difficult to be able to have that um have that, the grass transition to that for that time period.
What about educating our kids? I mean, do we have enough space currently with all the parking and everything else? If we're using just our land here, or is there something else we can do?
Well, as previously presented, we do have, and I can, Lion Akas can add to this, we do have, we do feel enough space based off of conversation that we've had with um, middle school administration of the portables that we need.
I'm, I'm also talking about parking and, and staging, everything else to do it realistically because you know, it's, it's, I, I, I think, you know, either we build a school or don't build a school. And it seems like my impression is it will be a little bit hard to do just using our land and our resources to stage. And I'm also getting concerned that I heard from someone that TAM construction will happen next year or year after TAM, TAM High School. If the bond measure passes, so where would they stage from? I mean, we are looking for parking and staging here. That.
You wouldn't stage all the way over here for construction.
No.
Half mile away.
So, but, but we need to stage somewhere near here, right?
So just a couple of things, and I can have um, our team add on to this one. Just to answer your first question. That's one of the meetings that we've developed is with the city, along with the TAM district, is a coordination meeting and it's a meeting, right? We're going to have our first one here, um either this week or next week, but that's going to be part of our conversations to make sure we're aware of each other's project, the impact it's going to have on the city and the traffic. And so that's part of the coordination steps that we're taking of the, of the other district, TAM district as well as the city to make sure that we're all on the same page as we're planning this and getting ahead of future issues and seeing how we can mitigate some of those issues on the best we can if possible. And so that's one piece. The second piece is we are like Sandrine said, is our goal is to focus on the footprint that we have here. Now, obviously, we're at a very high level in the planning stages. And so as we get closer, um, we're going to be looking at trying to see, do the staging here at this facility next to the construction. That's our our initial goal, as well as part of what came out of the city meeting is they have some space on the back end of their corporate, corporation yard that could help us based off, you know, our coordination of with their projects and what they have happened at the time to help us supplement parking of the staff, the construction staff that would be working. So those are the type of things that we're looking at. As well as with our meeting with the church, they, they discuss um, fifteen to twenty spaces that they do believe that are available. And so that's part of what um, our Lion Akas team was out there today, looking at those spaces, kind of figuring out what we would need to do to make sure they were complying for our needs, as well as the church also mentioned that they have some master planning um projects set up in the future that they're going to share with us to see if it's something that we can build out as far as some parking spaces they're looking for in the future that they may not have the funds for now, but maybe as part of this project, we can build out used for our needs during that interim period, and then they would use it going forward. And so there's kind of different things that we're exploring and we're looking at based off these initial meetings. Anything else to add for the, for the staging piece? Okay.
Those are bond program allow for us to build something permanently for the city that we could share or is it, is it, is allowed? I mean, I was under the impression that the money that the bond raises can only be used for the school district.
Because it would help us supple, because it would help us supplement our interim, it's part of our interim housing solution.
Yeah.
We would be able to use the funds for that matter.
Um, sorry, any trustee, Abdali, Abdali, do you have any questions right now in this halfway point?
No, I'm okay. Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Kaufman, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I just, I think, you know, we're still in very preliminary conversations, but I think that we will be able to find the solution for the parking somewhere. I don't, I don't see the Mill Valley community not helping us um, solve this issue one way or the other.
Um, uh, two quick questions. Uh, was a drop off pickup coordinated, coordination discussed with the city? Um, okay, and then um the, in terms of using their field space during the school day, I understand there was hesitation there or words are?
There was hesitation on converting part of it to hardscape. We actually use our field currently right now, our PE program uses our field.
Right.
That would be part of the same um, use that we would use during the interim housing.
Okay.
But it was more about converting it to hardscape.
Oh, that's understandable. Okay, thank you. Please. Now we have a lot.
All right, moving on to uh, just an update on the environmental services we've been uh, working on for the last couple of months. Um, so essentially we started, we hired um, a um environmental engineer um, back in November to help us review the existing data uh, related to the landfill um, on the site. So that's exactly what they've been doing over the last month. Uh, they've reviewed all documentation that was available. They also found additional uh, documentation from DTSC. Um, there is nothing at this point that they see as a red flag for, uh, that would prevent the district from building uh, any facility or modernizing facilities onsite. Um, they did read data about uh, methane, but uh, it seems like it is not clear enough and some clarification would need to be obtained or additional testing. Um, and um, regardless of the data we have, we would need to do additional sampling and testing in order to have a full understanding of the data uh, and what's ahead of us. Uh, one thing they did mention is that uh, we obviously talked about the concerns we heard from the community about um construction during interim housing. Um, they did mention that the, the highest uh, risk is associated with a close contact to the landfill and therefore the construction workers would be the most exposed. Obviously, that would be monitored. Typically, they would have alarms uh, and people monitoring the activities. So um, just wanted to clarify the, the level of um, exposure uh, for people. So the next steps, um, next week, uh, we are uh, meeting with the Department of Toxic Substances Control. Um, it's really intended to review all the data, um, all the findings, all the recommendations for next steps. Uh, e- essentially building up the plans and all agreeing on what the, the plan should be, the additional uh, testing, the timing, remediations, what needs to be done. So after that, um, we've, um, in January, we intend to have Nino and more um, come to the board and present the report, all the data and what needs to be done next. After that meeting, uh, we will ask um, them to provide services to do the testing, uh, the sampling, so we have all the data and we'll be able to move forward with the next steps and the implementation of remediations. Um, one last thing, um, as we mentioned earlier, we will bring the Sequoia contract to you next month. Um, the environmental services that are ongoing will be part of the Sequoia report. It is a portion of it. And it will be in parallel, uh, that process and is uh, typically it will take between ten and twelve months. That's for the environmental services. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? No? Trustee Abdali?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
So Abraham will give us an update on our um, community meeting that took place on November sixth and the feedback we received.
One second. Good evening, board of trustees, everybody. Uh, the feedback we heard on November sixth was uh, for the Mill Valley School District, ACOM, Lion Akas and into action, and we received questions on the following. Questions were focused on the cost and ownership of portables, the number of restrooms and location of those restrooms. Staff parking, flooding mitigation strategies, the selection of contractors, improved security, and the overall design process. Questions were also focused on modernization elementary schools, more specifically on children remaining in classrooms during improvements and outreach or learning opportunities being presented to students. Finally, the last item or the last theme that we heard was on educational implications and opportunities. Questions were focused on the development of another mural that students can contribute to, the removal of the skate park, physical classroom size, the maximum number of students and teachers who teach multiple grades and possible implications to increase that amount. Uh, that's all that we heard on November sixth, and I do just want to quickly point out something that's not highlighted on this slide. Um, we had a little bit less feedback in alignment with the reduction in um, attendance at the November sixth meeting. So we are doing a, an amplified amount of outreach uh, with a two week notice. Including a one month notice after this November sixth meeting, try and get more folks to the community forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Abraham.
Uh, next item is about the steering committee and uh, Laura and Mark will give um a better update, a more in detail update um, about the last or the first uh, steering committee. But just a reminder that who, uh, the committee was formed last month. Uh, and we had our first meeting on the thirtieth.
I can, I can take over. Um, so we had our first meeting um last month and really the, the, the meeting is being led by our lock and line Augustine, Lauren, Mark. And so the purpose of the meeting is so there's going to be three, three meetings. And so really eat, we have a different facets of the district being represented. Um, different staff members within the middle school, our two middle school principals, as well as our NVTA representative, our CSEA representative. Um, Director of Technology as well as Director in um, Staff of Student Services in Special Education. And so really the purpose is to look at a high level, be able to get feedback from the team, understand the different concepts, whether that we're talking about, whether it's lockers, whether it's a pod layout, just really getting all the high level content from the team and to, to, and then we'll kind of get, get all that information to be able to kind of shape as we're looking up for the conceptual design. And so, and so this is our outreach and communication that we shared previously. And so what we have is after our school board meetings is when then we set up our community meetings and that, we share the same, we share the same information for our community meetings. But that gives us an opportunity to have more of a dialogue and more of a conversation for the information that we're sending, that we're sharing here. As well as gives us an opportunity for any feedback they will receive for that community meeting. There's enough time between the next board meeting to be able to share that. Um, and provide, be able to provide additional information that came from the community meeting as well. And so we also have, oh, just going real quick, we also will be, um, before we head out to the Christmas break. Um, we're going to have another steering committee as well as we're going to do some student outreach. And so we set up a schedule with um, Principal Danny Chu that will be meet with, um, we'll have an open um, drop in session with students as well as we'll have two other um, meetings with select group of students that are going to be coming in and meeting with our Lion Akas team to be able to get feedback from the student voices as well. And this right here is our outreach and communication. So this is what, what we're looking at for the our agendas that are going to be coming up. And so we just wanted to share with the board of what's our um, framework as we're looking to the next couple of board meetings and just And so we just wanted to share with the board of what's our um framework as we're looking to the next couple of board meetings and just um what our goals are going to be at each board meeting. Obviously, this is preliminary as we're planning forward and things can change. But this is just to give you guys a, an understanding of what we're looking to be able to bring towards you for approval or just some of the topics and um concepts we're going to be talking about. And that's it. And that takes us to the summer.
Thank you so much. Are there uh any questions on this portion of the Measure G update? Any additional questions, Dr. Kaufman?
I just wanted to mention that I, I know there's um community interest in us researching some sort of food for food facilities and we will be doing some level of investigation and reporting on that. Um, again, you know, it was not something we had originally anticipated and with a limited budget, there's gives and gets. Um, but we will definitely, I don't want the community to think that we're not considering that.
Thank you for that addition. Okay, and then we go on to um well, MVMS update.
Yeah.
So just roll right into it. Okay.
Yeah, and so um we have Lauren, Allison, Mark, Jewel, who will give um really a deep dive into our MVMS update.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for having us. Uh, this is really an update on our steering committee uh findings. I will tell you, our steering committee was very engaged to the very last minute and then some, and uh that was great. Uh, we're a very excited uh group of folks and uh gave us a lot of great feedback in order to move forward. Um, we have a next steering committee on the eighteenth, uh community meeting on the eighteenth of December, a uh student meeting on uh the nineteenth that Julio had mentioned. And um that's going to give us a lot of opportunity here for the break uh before the break to uh prepare um for what we need for February. So you've seen this uh graph before, but those three larger green boxes, um it's hard to see in November, December, January. If you go to the next slide, um this is a blow up of those basically that talks about the uh three step process, the listen, iterate and endorse and the rough agendas of those meetings. I want to point out though, this is just to get us to programming and the um conceptual design feasibility phase. We don't even really start design until we get to this phase. So these three meetings are intended to get our arms around the scope and scale and magnitude so that the um our contractor partners can put some dollar ranges to that so that when we start this schematic design phase, we have a sense of if we're building everything uh we want or just portions of it. So um the reason I bring that up is because three meetings doesn't sound like enough and everybody has more uh input to give. And that is true. Uh, this is just to get us enough impact to um uh validate the uh program and ensure that we have captured um everything that we're looking at for this cost estimate. Uh, with that said, uh, we did uh discuss with the group a lot of the work that was previously done on the facilities master plan. As Sharon knows, she was there. Uh, this is the truncated version of the um materials we went over. But this was the, were the big ideas that were uh discussed in the facilities master plan, flexible, adaptable spaces, multipurpose rooms, engagement of art and science spaces. And then we use that as a launching point for a discussion on critical success factors uh with the group. And those critical success factors uh went into some broad categories, he- healthy, sustainable buildings, uh everything from solar to indoor air quality and drought tolerant landscape, using the building um as a teaching tool, but also making sure the users know how to use that building. Uh, we wanted an inclusive campus from restrooms to education, a special education and universal design, uh ease of maintenance and operations, safety and security. We've talked about that a lot with you already. How do we balance welcoming and not being a hardened space? Something that anticipates the future, how resilient is the facility? And what um does center of community look like um for this campus? So when we look at the program validation, we did confirm the grade level pods that currently exist is desirable with the integration of science and special education, that arts would have their own area because that's uh supports all grade levels and that the collaboration spaces needed to be very useful. We also looked at master planning for the gymnasium multipurpose space. So we would have those costs on hand when we bring it back to the board and uh offer choices to you about how to spend uh your bond dollars and what financing and funding options are available there. We do have remaining questions. Some of them are already in process in terms of doing sidebar meetings to discuss what scale and size the gymnasium look like. Uh, Dr. Kaufman mentioned food service in the kitchen, uh maker spaces versus collaboration spaces that are um the teachers felt might be more useful, uh the dreaded locker conversation that every school district has, the location of the district office, all of these are going to be impactful as we get not only into the cost estimating portion, but moving into that more uh detailed planning. One of the areas that's come up since our meeting was the discussion of air conditioning. We had originally assumed some level of conditioned air to address um the spell issues we've heard so much about. We uh can bring back to you the cost of full air conditioning versus fil- uh filtered active ventilation systems. When you are shut down completely, you're going to want air moving. Uh, the question is what that air looks like. And so all of those have cost implications and we can start to bring some thoughts. One of the really fun, engaging exercises we did was a lot of uh the images you see here uh were talked about and voted on and left us sticky notes about. And uh we just highlighted a few of the ones that uh really received a lot of positives. The gathering stair, the central community space, uh some area for production that uh is used by all departments, breakout spaces, uh drama spaces, as well as uh libraries as the center of the school, a welcoming front door and little places for students to be together or separate, but within the same place like you see at the uh Genius Bar. So we got some very good early feedback uh from the team. As I mentioned, the next steps are right around the corner. Uh, the uh December eighteenth steering committee number two in the uh later in the day will do the community and staff outreach. That will not contain um uh any of the feedback we get from the steering committee because we want to save that for all of you. They will be hearing uh from the steering committee number one. Uh, student outreach, uh spending the day here, hearing from students. We have looked at scheduling some school site tours um to see things in um in actual design that people might be able to react to. And then we'll be back January eighth on the Staff and Service Day uh to have not only a presentation of where we are today, but some breakout sessions if folks want to talk one on one.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions from the board? Trustee Abdali, anything?
No, thank you for asking.
Okay, Dr. Kaufman, I think um no, I will say that I did attend the steering committee. I thought um, I thought our staff was really engaged. I thought they brought their questions. So you know, I hope that it seems like you got a lot of information, a lot of useful information. So that was a good, a good meeting. Well, I think uh, I think that concludes facilities. If there's no other questions or comments, thank you so much. And then Julio, you're sticking around for, sorry, don't go, don't go.
That's right.
Everyone.
That is right.
Uh, resolution eight dash twenty-three, twenty-four, supportive application for eligibility determination and funding in school facility program. It says dot, 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 dots. I don't know if there's more. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening. So I'm here tonight to request approval for our resolution. This resolution was provided by DeLong Hancock, um who's working with us on our state funding. And so now that the state has exhausted their current funding, this is a requirement for districts to be able to pass this resolution till we get back in line to once um there's more revenue that comes through for matching funds, then we're still in um still in line to be able to receive those funds.
Uh, any questions? No questions? Just a Billy, any questions? I don't know if she heard me.
No, sorry, I couldn't get off mute fast enough.
Uh, thank you. Would someone like to um make a motion to pass this resolution?
I move to pass this revolution, resolution.
Revolution. Second? Trustee, you second? Uh, all in favor? A real call. Sorry, go ahead.
President Nakatani.
Aye.
Trustee, send to touch.
Aye.
Trustee you.
Aye.
Trustee Abdali.
Aye.
And I am trustee Katz and I am an I.
Thank you so much. Resolution passes. And we will now move on to um receipt and acknowledgement of CSCA reopeners for twenty-four to twenty-five negotiations.
We're noting that we're one minute off of our cheat sheet timeline.
Hey!
You are doing a dependence job, President Nakatani.
Now, I believe we have to close this meeting and open the public meeting. Is that
No.
The process or is there more to it?
I'll have to present, I think I present the reopener or sunshine first.
Okay.
So you have in front of you um the CSCA initial proposal. Um, it's self explanatory. They're um opening on Article one, um Article eight and Article nine. Um, they would also like us to commit to um assisting them in participating for eligible employees in the classified school employee summer assistance program, which we are already doing. So um I think that is the, the sum total of their um sunshine. And now I believe we go into open hearing, a pub, open a public hearing.
So I closed this meeting, correct? At eight twenty-two, I closed this meeting and and will open the public hearing for the CSCA openers at eight twenty-two. Let's go again. Any public comment? Okay, then I will close the public hearing at eight twenty-two and I will reopen the regular board meeting at eight twenty-two. Thank you.
And then um you will see that our um reopener as well um is included. I don't actually see the attachment on mine.
Okay, so, sorry, can you guys hear me? So um this is for the Mill Valley School District reopeners. We are um in agreement that we will have two reopeners, which are Articles eight and nine salary and benefits, plus a reopener of um each party's choice. And so we had reviewed this with administrative council and we are electing to reopen evaluations. We'd like to uh look at the evaluation tool, which is a template that has not been revised for some time. So it's an opportunity for us to review and validate and make any revisions or um any changes um in relation to negotiations with our CSCA team.
Thank you very much.
Another public hearing.
We do a public hearing for this too?
Yep.
Okay, so I will, oh, it's eight twenty-three. There we go. I will close the uh regular board meeting at twenty-three and I will open the public hearing for the district's reopeners at eight twenty-three. Any public comment? No comment. And I will close that meeting at eight twenty-three and reopen the regular board meeting as well. Thank you, everyone.
I was going over to Dr. Rollins.
And that's right. And now it is Dr. Rollins.
Right, I'm pleased to present the first interim and budget revision. So keep in mind that we've already um completed two budget revisions with the board um since budget adoption. And there are four documents within your board packet. There is first the common message from the Orion County Office of Education. Second, the first interim report, which is in the SACS format, which is required for submission, which stands for the standardized account code structure. And then there's also the interim budget report as well as a copy of this presentation that we have up here. So with that, let's move to the next slide. So um it is a requirement through education code for the district to file two reporting periods. Um, they're called interim reporting periods, the first being October thirty-first, which is what's being presented this evening. The second through January thirty-first, which will be presented to the board prior to March fifteenth. And then there is the um, it it all, it also includes the multi-year projections um through the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth. In addition, uh education code requires the Board of Education to certify based on the current projections and whether or not it can meet its financial obligations. So looking at the next slide, there are three types of certifications. The first being a positive certification, which is what we are recommending for this first interim, which means the district can meet its financial obligations for the current fiscal year as well as the subsequent two years. The second two certifications, um which we are not recommending, but want to explain are the qualified certification, which means that the district cannot meet its financial obligation for the current fiscal year or subsequent two years, which would be in the multi-year projections. And then a negative certification means the district is unable to meet its financial obligations for the remainder of the current fiscal year or subsequent fiscal years. And so that would mean there would be insufficient funds in the reserves for economic uncertainty. And along with the presentation, we've also noted the page numbers that um correlate with the agenda packet for the full SACS report. So with that, we've um provided the assumptions and again, we are a community funded basic aid district, which means that we heavily rely on property taxes as opposed to the cost of living allocation, which is a calculation that's used for the standardized, um I'm sorry, for the local control funding formula or the LCFF. But in order for us to determine which will provide us with the greatest amount of revenue, we uh calculate that each year for the LCFF and the basic aid. And so that's why you'll see why we're also looking at our ADA or average daily attendance. And so with that, um because of COVID, the state has allowed us to do a calculation based on our average daily attendance with what's called a rolling three-year average, looking back. And so while you see that the, the um average daily attendance looks fairly high at two thousand four hundred and thirty-five, our actual average daily attendance for this year is closer to two, twenty-two hundred students. And that was also in the consent agenda for our enrollment update. And so we are still calculating our multi-year projections and average daily attendance at a three and a half percent absence rate. And that's why you'll see the ninety-six point five. We also, for our multi-year projections, include the stepping column, which is one and a half percent. It's generally one and a half percent for certificated and two percent for classified. And then we're also looking at the restricted lottery for both restricted and unrestricted, and then other one-time funds are also included in this. And then we also look at the consumer price index for the um, our revenues, um primarily our lease revenues for our lease agreements are tied to the consumer price index as well as our operational costs um for that as well. And then um we also wanted to highlight the STIRS rate, which is set currently for the multi-year projections in current year at nineteen point one percent. And then the CALpers, which are for our non-credentialed um classified employees at twenty-six point six eight percent. And then this year, health and welfare increases came in just above eight percent. And then let's look at the next slide. So the next slide is um our interim budget review. And again, we had completed two budget revisions as a result of our negotiations, which happened after the board adopted the June budget adoption. And that's why you'll see on the left-hand column, this is a budget revision since our September thirteenth budget revision. And then the middle column represents our first interim. And then you'll see the difference on the two right-hand columns and then what those material changes were. And so you can see that there were some changes um specific to our anticipated projected property taxes um as well as um our state revenues. There was an adjustment um for medical billing as well as the art and music um materials block grant. And then you'll see that we post all of our local revenues as they're received, so that included local donations as well as cal shape. And then on the next slide, you'll see the expenditures, which are reflected there. Again, you'll see adjustments to our overall expenses. So again, the majority of our budget is based on certificated salaries, classified salaries and associated benefits. So those are the first three rows. Um, and then we also have our books and supplies, which includes prior year carryover services and other operating expenses. Also includes prior year carryover, one-time funds that would also be for um professional development and conferences. And then you'll see that the net change, so there weren't any changes for capital outlay or other outgo. And then let's go to the next slide. So the next slide shows our multi-year projections. And you can see that we have our beginning balance in the first column for twenty-two, I'm sorry, twenty-three, twenty-four, and then the subsequent two years. In all years, we will meet our required economic uncertainty and that's what REU stands for, the bottom line. And you'll see that we are anticipating And you'll see that we are anticipating the third row from the bottom to deficit spend. And what that means is we will be spending down our reserves. So as anticipated with our recent negotiations and through our multi-year projections, we are anticipating to reduce our reserves. Um, and you can see um what that looks like in the surplus deficit. So the parentheses represents the deficit for each fiscal year. And I will make note that prior year carryover for this year is the third row from the top, which is our restricted carryover, which is about two point nine million dollars. And that's restricted carryover, which revenues were received in prior years, and the expenses are posted, but you do not see them in the multi-year projections. And then we can move to the next slide. And the next slide, um again, this is a comparison, um which is a little bit different. You'll see that we show the top line is our net change and our fund balance at adoption. And then the reserve at adoption. The second two rows represent our fund balance at first interim, and then our reserves at first interim. And the reason why there's a significant difference is, again, we had made um changes to um our budget. After adoption, we had settled with both our MVTA um for the current year and the subsequent year. And then with CSEA, we are, we have settled for the current year, and as you just approved, the reopeners for twenty-four, twenty-five. And so, just to highlight, for the third year, for twenty-five, twenty-six, we are anticipating a reduction. Um, assuming all of these multi-year projections, um you know, we know that the budget is a very fluid document, but under this current snapshot and assumption, it will be a reduction of fourteen percent. So with that, um I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, I know the report is detailed, but I I'm happy to go to any of the pages if there are questions. But we are recommending that the board approve the twenty-three, twenty-four first interim with a positive certification. Um, this is due to the Marin County Office of Education on December fifteenth. And so we submit this to the County of Marin. They review what's called their AV twelve hundred review. Um, and then we will also, on December fifteenth, the timing seems a little off, but we'll also be receiving our annual audit from the prior year um from the independent auditor. So that is also submitted to the County Office of Education, as well as the Federal Clearing House and the California Department of Education.
Thank you, Dr. Rollins. Do we have questions from the board?
Can I ask you?
Trustee you.
So, revenue assumption, what what is it for oh four, I mean twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six? What what were the revenue assumptions, and what do we get for twenty-three, twenty-four?
Yes, and so that is on the, it's it's contained within the big packet.
Yeah.
And it is in our multi-year projections. So for the current year, we are assuming a six point six percent increase um to our property taxes. Next year, under the recommendation of the Marin County Office of Education, as well as the County of Marin, um they are anticipating a reduction of two percent, so four point six percent. And then the subsequent year, three point five percent. Again, that will be adjusted once we have more information from the County of Marin. Um, what I will say is that I think um many of you have heard sort of the most recent news. Um, I sat in on a J-LAC meeting on Friday, and there is a lot of discussion specific to the COLA or the cost of living allocation. Currently, under the first interim, the assumption was that the COLA would be at or around three percent next year. And now they're anticipating that it'll be closer to about one and a half percent. Um, for this year, they do feel like there is enough funding for LCFF districts um and all of the funding that they have projected. Um, and they also do have the rainy day reserves um at the state level.
And do we have for twenty-three, twenty-four, so it was six point six percent, but did we assume less, I thought, or more?
Oh, just, yeah, after our last meeting, I went back and I looked at that, it was it was still in the six percent range. We've been, we've been at or around six point two, six point six percent.
Okay.
Um, the county usually gives us their guidance um early on, and as you know, tax bills went out in early October, and so they have a pretty good sense of where that will be. Um, but again, I would say that there's a tail of about twelve to eighteen months. And so that's why for the next years, they're very, um I would say, a little bit more cautious about where they're placing the property tax increase.
Okay. Uh, I have a question. Um, what is the almost three million dollar difference between in services between um the but revision and first interim? And I apologize if you said what it was.
So the the, that would be the restricted carryover, it's about two point nine million dollars.
Okay.
And so those are restricted dollars that have parameters that the revenue is received in prior years, but the expenses are carried over if they're not spent in the year received.
Right.
So adjusting for that, it's two million deficit as we anticipated.
Yes, so if we look at the unrestricted side, which um which we could look at, it's it's just under two million dollars. It's one point nine six eight three seven nine.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Abdoli, do you have any questions?
No, thank you for checking.
Okay, anybody else? Oh, Dr. Hoffman?
As we, as we go into looking at uh, you know, district vision goals, priorities, um one of the things I I think I heard loud and clear last spring was we have an interest in maintaining our our triple A bond rating. And I think we will want to look at how do we spell that out. We we say that we want to maintain, you know, fiscal prudency or something in our goals. But I think, again, in the interest of transparency and clarity, that we may want to, you know, spell that out a little bit clearer, so that it provides more parameters for us to to have conversations about our budget.
Quick, another question. Sorry. When it, when is our parcel taxes come up on the ballot?
Yeah, so um for the the existing parcel tax, it had a twelve-year term, and so it expires June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine.
Okay.
And each year, um voters approved a five-year um escalator. So that is included, but generally speaking, districts would want to potentially start looking at a renewal or evaluating those um the parcel tax two years prior to the expiration date.
So five years from now, okay.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, so this item does need, um I need a motion, and roll call vote, please.
Motion to approve.
Second? No, thank you.
Yeah.
Roll call vote.
Aye. President Nakatani.
Aye.
Trustee Sernsir Taj.
Aye.
Trustee you.
Aye.
Trustee Abdoli.
Aye.
And I am trustee Katz, and I'm an aye.
Thank you, and it passes. Thank you very much, Dr. Rollins. And next, we move on to board operations, review and discussion of special meetings.
Yes, so this is the extra calendar, right? Yep, in front of you, uh you'll have, it's um M-one, a series of uh meetings that are called out. So there is a special meeting schedule where we're hoping to do the bylaw review, bylaws and protocols review based on your feedback with the surveys that we sent out um for our governance handbook on January nineteenth in the morning. In the afternoon, we are hoping that we can find time to do district values and goals, because heading into the LCAP season, we really want to sort of define very clearly which are the board goals and priorities. We have the, an array of them, I think the ones that you worked on last eight, last January, maybe, are the most current. But they are currently called board goals, they're not called district goals. So I think we want to transition those into potentially district goals.
Can I, can I ask just a quick, quick clarifying question? Is it typical in districts that there are two separate board goals and district goals, or is it one in the same? Okay, so we just need to unify.
Correct, yeah. And and just make sure that if, you know, I'm going out and saying guaranteed and viable curriculum and MTSS, because that's what I read in my audit of the LCAP and strategic plan. But if that is the work we want to do, we want to state that clearly, and then make sure it manifests in the LCAP.
Did you give us a deadline for getting the bylaws and all of our notes?
I did, but I don't remember what it was.
December eighth.
Oh!
December eighth and December fifteenth, we can resurface those.
All right.
We'll resurface.
Thank you. Uh, with a new uh deadline.
Yes.
It's fine, thank you, and apologies for.
It's all good.
Not, we all missed it.
Oh, did we, okay.
I just assumed there was no comment.
It's all good.
Important to clarify, I guess, it sounds like a check check.
Thank you, okay, thank you for putting it down in front of us.
And then, the June date I had included, I mean, one of the things we need to position ourselves to do by September is identify what my goals are going to be. And again, one assumes the board, as goes the board, goes the superintendent, goes the district, right? But we haven't had time to really come together, and you'll do my evaluation in, you'll have a special meeting on May thirtieth for you all to talk about my evaluation. And then I'm going to go ahead and try to make just a two-hour closed session before our June sixth meeting, so that we don't have to add an extra meeting for that. But the thinking was that potentially on June twentieth, or someday that you can all get together, that we spend some time going, this is where we said we were going to be, here's where we ended up as the as the governance team, you will have done my evaluation by then. But really looking forward to, okay, where are we now, so that over the summer, I can be thinking about what we need to position ourselves for going into the next year, and then the thinking being that August sixteenth, we would spend some time doing governance protocols review, because we won't have had the chance really go over it formally, um and then doing my goals and evaluation. And I know there are conflicts with the twentieth, um so I don't know, you know, I think uni have a conflict from the eleventh through the twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
I think before the ele, I think before we finish the LCAP and the budget, it's going to be hard for us to position ourselves to sort of get any reflective conversation. Um, we could go, I don't know if trustees are around later in June. Um, you know, we could potentially do the following week, um like the week of the twenty twenty-sixth. Um. I know, and and that's.
Yeah, I'm definitely out of country from eleventh through twenty.
Twenty, twenty-eight?
Um, twenty-six.
Twenty-six, so we could. Um.
I will say, we usually take off that orthogly week, which is where we're starting to go into, not to make it complicated.
Yeah, and my calendar, so I don't know, I can I can always flex my calendar. So, I mean, the other option would be just to to give it a shot on the sixteenth of August, and just try to try to, I mean, I'm sure we can find the time, if we can do the sixteenth of August and just do bring backs in connection with our governance protocols and goals. We can do some self-evaluation around it, and then maybe some metricing of looking forward.
Yeah.
Um, because it will be, you know, I think realistically, by June twentieth, we're all going to be really tired too. And yet, as a practice, I want to position us to look back before we look forward, so that I I know where we're going, but.
Also before we s, uh, before we step away for a month, and I'm, and I'm hesitant, a little reluctant to say it, but um but while it's actually fresh in our minds, because I feel like a month away, we'll be trying to remember.
Right, yeah.
I mean, is there an option of adding an hour or so to the Ju-June twelfth meeting as just a?
Well, sort of, sorry.
Oh, sorry, no, 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 that's fine.
Right. And I mean, we could, we could do it without uni too, and then I could always follow up with the questions with uni when she gets it. I mean, I I I don't like to do that, you know, as a practice, but I also know, you know, I I would, I don't want us to miss this opportunity to stop, pause, reflect on, you know, before we get into the next year, because I think August is very different than than June.
Can you, can we meet on twenty-seventh?
I don't, I don't know, I guess, I mean, I.
June twenty-seventh?
I can make my.
Well, you, what about June sixth? Like, again, like, is there an option of just attaching it to our?
June sixth, you have an extended, hold on, I gotta look, I think that's an extended for my evaluation. Because I I moved my evaluation up, so you'd want to get my evaluation done first, and then.
I said the evaluation is May thirtieth.
That's when you write it, that's when you guys get together and.
Yeah.
Argue. Or celebrate.
So nobody's going away on twentieth, but they might go away on twenty-seventh.
It's uh impossible to say right now, but I'm wondering if um maybe we could just hold the twentieth for now, but also keep in mind, could we do homework? In the way that we're going to do the work we should have done, December eighth.
Right, we can definitely.
But you know, we could do the homework, you know, individually on our own time, uh while that information is still fresh, and then, you know, have it out there, even if we don't follow up with it.
That's a good point, we could collect some data and hold it to come back together.
Yeah.
That may be your best option, I like that, I guess.
And I'm also happy, I think somebody, I heard somebody say like August sixteen, or even adding it to August eighth, uh, you know.
I like those ideas.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that.
The only thing I'd like to say about that is that my experience is if we, if we do the work and then we wait a month, we lose all of the momentum. We did that before, remember, we can't find all that work, and I know I spent hours on my, I don't know where it went. So I just realized that that was a learning lesson I wanted to share at this moment.
Well, this is a discussion item only, we're not voting on having, so maybe we just hold it all, hold these ideas, and.
Sounds great.
And then.
See how, see how January goes with our first kind of like long day, you know.
May, may I just quickly come back to May thirtieth? Is there, is there a reason for that particular date, or is there some?
No, it's just trying to, if if you're, I was going to have you do my evaluation later, and then hook it up to a board meeting, hook the, your work on my evaluation up to a board meeting, but given that we only have the sixth, and then uni's gone on the eleventh, I figured we better get my evaluation done on the sixth. So somewhere between when I give you the evaluation, which should be like late May, maybe mid-May, giving you time.
Is it possible to move it up by one day, the thirtieth is my anniversary?
Oh, yeah.
Wait, is it also open house?
I know. Sorry.
When is open house? Isn't open house the thirtieth?
Fourth.
Okay, I think I.
I don't, I I don't have it in front of me, but I don't, it's not, May, May is going to have so many things, you know, so I'll sort of kind of try to juggle. The others, I just want to mention the community forums.
Oh.
Those are first come, first served, I guess, you know, realistically, I I was going to have them try to be board meetings, so that we could have all trustees present, but I think at this point, you know, first come, first served, and, you know, let Anna know. And uh, again, really, we're, all should be connected. We're trying to begin this process, and it, we won't get very far on the portrait of a graduate this year, but just beginning, like, you know, as we visualize our students who graduate, and we build an LCAP and a budget that matched that, what are those priorities? And then, as we move into the LCAP, what are, you know, what are those priorities, and how do they fit with what the portrait of a graduate is? And then, how do we match our budget to those things? So that's why they're in that order, in that sequence.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, there's a lot of special meet sessions, like, wouldn't it be better to do it to uh May thirtieth, yes, it goes to twenty-ninth? Yeah.
The thirtieth is.
I mean, is it possible to attach to the twenty-second? I mean, I I want to be mindful, we heard when we used to have a lot of extra meetings, and then it's measure G meetings and different things. I felt like our community kind of got overwhelmed, even when there are things that we don't necessarily need them to be at, but you know, people want to be there, so to the extent that we can not make it look like we're, you know, asking so much of them.
That that makes sense, if you if you can come on the twenty-second, I think, you know, I don't know what we might have for closed session, so let's maybe plan it to our closed session, and then if I need to interrupt it, we'll have to punt.
Are others okay with that?
Review what you just said.
So we.
So I, instead of having the thirtieth be a standalone two-hour session, just attach it to the twenty-second.
Yeah, of March?
Of May, so same month, so just like a week before, where we already have a regular meeting, just add it as a closed session item.
Yeah.
And you can also always do work in between, you know, it doesn't, this was sort of getting you the opportunity to get in the room together, so I would imagine there was some pre-work um that you might do, or you might delegate the board president to go over the evaluation with me. We have to look at my contract, but, you know, I think many options exist. You just need some time to get together and align, so that your evaluation looks like the majority of the board's opinion.
Okay. And then twentieth, we'll see what we do, June twentieth?
For now, let's hold.
Let's hold it.
And then we'll 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 also regroup.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't. All right, thank you, everyone. And now on to future board items. We have the governance calendar.
Is there an updated version of this calendar? This one is August, updated August fourth.
Maybe we could have these calendars resented to us with changes. That'd be great.
Yeah, because now we've got steering committee in there too and other many others. Okay.
Pretty well covered for future board ends at the moment.
Yeah, I think so.
I hear silence in the room.
I think we're ready to move on to board reports. I will just start at the Why do you start? Okay. Would anyone like to volunteer to go first for their board report rather than be calling on someone?
I will, I will volunteer.
Too trusting, yeah.
Uh, just wanted to share a highlight. You know, all the work has been continuing with Kido and PTA Council and Old Mill and Edna, and I'm just really grateful for the Edna community right now. I'm on a planning committee for an event coming up next week that our DEI committee at the school pulled together kind of last minute, but hearing feedback and the need from the community. I think the agreed-upon title of the event was the Edna United for Peace Community Gathering. So gathering in the in the Edna Garden and and really highlighting, it's right around the winter solstice, so highlighting in the darkest moments, then, you know, you start to look to light and so really leaning on the community and coming together and acknowledging and accepting and appreciating differences, and so just a moment, another moment of gratitude for just the wonderful community that we have. Uh, the nineteenth, it's an RSVP event we're we're planning, but I'm happy to share that with you. No, the event, just committed parents coming together and and otherwise band, band concerts and choral concerts and all kinds of wonderful things happening at this time of year. So just a moment to stop and celebrate the great things that our kids are doing, that our teachers are doing with them, and a lot of wonderful kiddo events, so thank you, kiddo.
Thank you.
Uh, trustee you, do you have anything?
Nothing willing to report.
Trustee Sernsichad?
I don't have anything. That I'm very sorry that I did miss due to illness, the two-day conference in San Francisco, but I was updated by trustee Nakatani and heard that there's lots, I have emails and lots to review, and I'm looking forward to actually us having an opportunity to see if any of these learnings can be put into an action plan, so. Good.
I I actually forgot that already that that's happened. And and it was pretty amazing coming into a massive room and I just looked around at everybody and thought, it's like the number of people who are volunteering their time and are committed to supporting their districts and doing this great work was just really, really awesome to think, you know, and see it at that scale, so.
Yeah, I think it's four thousand attendees and it's majority trustees. So, yeah, majority of volunteers. Uh, trustee Abdoli, do you have any, anything to share?
I don't have anything else to share.
Okay. Um, I was just going to share about CSBA, that it was it it felt a little daunting to go, because I was like, I'll take, I'll take conference. But it was really, the speakers were great keynote speakers, especially, you know, about like, the one about AI was really interesting too, and of course, Sean Genright. And I went to a couple of sessions that were really informative. You know, one about like board self-evaluation, and I went to one about workforce housing too, just to like, just to see what's going on out there. Um, so, yeah, I took some good notes and I could summarize that and share it with everybody, because I know we all tried to hit different things. And I know you guys hit safety. I think the three of you all went to safety, which was really, really, I didn't do that because I did other things, so would love to hear more. And I believe that is it. How do we do on time? I don't have my glasses on.
Eight fifty-six.
Are we supposed to end at nine?
So Sid and Anna want some pom-poms so that they can cheer on the staff vibe, and when you're on time, they'll be over there shaking their pom-poms.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. Thank you, our attendees and the audience. I will call this during this meeting at eight fifty-six. Thank you.
Thank you. Congrats to our new officers.